I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's the regular Emeryville Planning Commission meeting on August 27, 2020, and the time is 6:37. And I wanted to go into the introductory remarks per the COVID public health emergency. I'd like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided under the governor's executive order in response to the COVID-19 state of emergency. During the public health emergency, City Hall is closed to the public. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being livestreamed on TV on ETV Channel 27. And in this case, this particular meeting is not being livestreamed, but is being recorded. And provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main Emory, our main City of Emeryville website at www.Emeryville.org, and then navigating to the Planning Commission page. Once there, you will see a link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the Raise Your Hand function or feature visible on your screen. If you are calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda, and there is a link on the Planning Commission Agenda page as well. So at this time, if we could have a roll call?
Certainly Commissioner Chafe. Commissioner Guerrero.
Here.
Commissioner Keller.
Here.
Commissioner Mendez.
Here.
Commissioner Sohany.
Here.
Vice Chair Young.
Here.
And Chair Thompson.
Here.
All seven commissioners are present.
Great, thanks. So we're going to go into the public comments. There's also a general statement around COVID. Now is the time for the public comment portion of this meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda should have begun submitting, have begun submittal of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments on the record. If you are participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine, and the clerk will call you at the appropriate time. At this time, I will ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card. Have there been any comments?
I believe that the city clerk is not able to access this at this time.
Okay.
And I do not have any emails. I also get email, an email notification if there's an online speaker card, and I do not have any.
Okay, and then has anyone raised their hand or used the Raise the Hand function?
I do not see any raised hands.
Maybe give them, usually Sherry recommends a few seconds or so to give people time to respond.
I still see no raised hands.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Hearing no additional requests to make comments, the public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. And you'll have an opportunity to address and speak on matters that are listed on the agenda when those respective items come up. All right, great. I think I'd like to move on to the approval of the action minutes of July 23, 2020. Anyone like to make a motion to approve? Or does anyone have any comments, I suppose, first?
I'll make.
Seconded.
Okay, I think I heard Commissioner or Vice Chair Young and Commissioner Guerrero seconding. There were some other voices in there too, but I think Commissioner Young was first.
Yeah, Commissioner Mendez was also positive as well.
Okay. All right. On the motion to approve the action minutes, Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sohany.
Aye.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Vice, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking. I did that all wrong, I'm sorry. Let me start up. Commissioner Chafe.
Aye.
Oh, now he froze. Charlie, your feet is frozen. You said yes before. Commissioner Mendez said yes. Commissioner Sohany. Commissioner Young, Vice Chair Young.
Aye.
And Chair Thompson.
Aye.
I was using the minutes as my listed commissioner. I think you missed Commissioner Guerrero, did you?
Charlie, I seconded, but you froze when they got to my name in the second round.
Oh, I froze, oh, I'm sorry. Well, what do you think of the minutes, Commissioner Young? Are you okay? I think that was unanimous.
All right, great, great. At this time, let's move on to the community director's report, Charlie.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. My report is very brief tonight. As you know, the city council normally does not meet in August, but they did hold a brief meeting last Wednesday, August 19th, to, and they voted to cancel the November 3 election for city council because there are only three nominees, and there are three seats up for elections. It's an uncontested election, and there are also no local measures of ballot. Under these circumstances, state law allows the council to cancel the election, which they did, which will save the city $42,000 that can be used for other purposes. Other than that, I have no other news to report tonight, so that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Okay, well, with that, then we'll move forward to the disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. First, are there any conflicts of interest?
I have a conflict of interest. So for item 8.0, I'm going to have to excuse my, or recuse myself from that item. BMR is a client of my employer, and therefore it's considered a source of income for me.
Any other conflicts?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Oh, I do have another ex parte communication to disclose. On August 19, I met with David Dial, which is the project manager for the Emeryville Center for the Arts Project. And that's it for me.
Okay, yeah, so moving on to the ex parte communications, I met as well with BMR, Emeryville Center, the development group there, and that was last month.
Yeah, I met with the BMR group as well, end of July. I don't remember the exact date.
And I also met with BMR sometime, and I think it was July as well.
This is Commissioner Guerrero. I met with both applicants for item 7.1 as well as 8.1.
I've also met with applicants from both projects, David Dial on August 25th and with BMR Realty on August 19th. Is that everyone, or there's anything else to announce? Yeah, Andrea?
I just wanted to remind both you, Chair Thompson and Commissioner Mendez, that I sent a memo yesterday regarding, we now have to make announcement of any conflicts of interest when the item is called as well. And at that point, Commissioner Mendez will need to leave the meeting, which in this case means leaving the Zoom meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, just until the item is over. Well, there isn't anything after that other than Commissioner comments, so you can come back to that if you wish.
Okay, so will I need to completely leave the Zoom meeting?
Yes, you will.
Okay. Understood.
And then how will she know when to come back?
Um, that's a good point because it's not being broadcast. One of us could text her.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great, and then she'll just have the option.
Okay.
Okay, and that's.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to clarify that that is new in terms of having the conflict of interest at this point in the meeting, and then having to announce it when the agenda item comes up. That is separate from the ex parte communications.
Correct.
So that was my question. So if we have ex parte communications, do we state that at this point in the meeting and then as well as the item comes up? Or only when the item comes up?
No, you've already stated your ex parte communications. This is really just related to conflicts of interest, and we can, Charlie and I can work to maybe come up with a better agenda flow for future meetings. But given that this rule was just effective last Friday, I just wanted to remind everybody about that.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, just one last question. Any, any other announcements that anyone wants to make? Otherwise, we'll move on to the public hearing. Okay, great, thank you very much. So we're going to move on to seven, and the public hearing, and 7.1 is the Emeryville Center for the Arts. This is a consideration of the conditional use permit, design review permit for an adaptive reuse proposal. And I believe Maru has a presentation for us.
Yes, I did.
Can you all see the screen, the PowerPoint?
I can.
Yes, all right.
Okay, good evening, Commissioner. This is Muri Nissai, a staff planner for this project. This is a consideration of a use permit and design review permit for an adaptive use of an existing 30,000 square foot building to accommodate an arts and cultural center. This also includes a tree removal permit for six trees on Hollis Street and one street tree on 40th Street. The last time the commission saw this project was in May of this year as a study session. At that time, a concern was expressed regarding infrastructure and support for the simply places such as the forum. Concern was expressed regarding adequate storage capacity. It was recommended that a path leading from the sidewalk to the jewel box be incorporated. The commission expressed support for planting new trees where trees needed to be removed instead of relocating existing trees. The material change in the east and north elevation to metal and some wood was acceptable to the commission. The proposed three signs were generally well received except for the logo or the sign on the east elevation facing the parking lot. And there was a, it was expressed the need to see street sections of Hollis Street and 40th Street. It was also recommended that the applicant looked into an alternative to the specified lines for the north elevation. So since the study session, there have been basically three changes to the proposal. One is regarding the parking lot. As a result of further design refinement and costing, the applicant has decided not to re-strike the parking lot. So the total number and alignment of the parking spaces will remain similar to the existing conditions, and the location of light poles and trees will remain. So there will be no relocation or removal of light poles and trees. The city's trash enclosure will be shared by the proposed facility, also not changed from its existing location. A ramp for deliveries is now proposed to run from the door on the south elevation along the south edge of the building and along the north side of the existing trash enclosure in lot. Regarding the Hollis Street tree, the six existing Chinese juniper trees will be removed and six replacement trees will be planted in a 4.5-foot wide planter strip between the sidewalk and the curb. An eight-foot clear walkway will be constructed within a sidewalk width of 12 and a half feet. And this is the sidewalk structure on Hollis Street. On the 40th Street, a new path found leading to the jewel box has been incorporated. One London plane tree will be moved to provide better sightline to the drill box. The existing six-foot sidewalk is not proposed to be changed. The entire 40th Street frontage will be reconfigured in the future for the 40th and San Pablo Bus Hub project. The Arts Center project has been designed so as not to conflict with these future improvements. And this is the sidewalk section of the 40th Street. So as you can see, this is the existing sidewalk. And this is the landscape area, and this is the sidewalk that meets to the drill box. At the May study session, the proposal included a watchman's unit on the second level. This and some storage space along with it as a future phase. This has been eliminated at this time. So this is the existing site and demolition plan. As you can see, the process indicates removal of street trees along Hollis, which are six, and one along, along 40th Street. The parking lot will remain the same as it exists today. And the trash enclosure, which is existing for city hall, will be shared by this facility. And this for the, this shows the site circulation plan, and you can see the ramp that would be off for loading purposes. The floor plan has not changed from what you saw in the May study session. So at the bottom, you have Hollis Street, and on the right-hand side, you have 40th Street. The main entrance is off, off Hollis Street. So what you see in purple are studio spaces. What you see in blue is the multipurpose room. Here you have the forum. This is the co-working in green and office spaces. This is the Hollis Street elevation. At the top of the screen is the proposed building elevation with landscape. So what you see is the planter strip and the new trees. This is the 40th Street elevation. Again, at the top, what you see is the proposed building elevation with landscape. The north elevation, this is the elevation facing city hall. This has not changed other than the removal of the watchman's unit. And this is the east elevation. This too has not changed from what you saw at the May study session. Signage, as indicated before, there were three signs, three signs have been proposed. Two of them are roof signs. And this is same as you saw at the May study session. This is along 40th Street. And this is also same as you saw at the May study session, and this is along Hollis Street. The signage facing the parking lot, this has changed. It is now just the signage, which says Emeryville Arts Center in lieu of what was earlier proposed as in a logo, and that has been removed. In terms of tree removal, as I mentioned before, it includes removal of six Chinese juniper trees along Hollis and one London plane tree on 40th. An Arbus report was prepared, and it attached to the staff report, and it states that the juniper trees and the London plane tree are in good condition. However, the cost of relocating the trees with the kind of care it will need for transplantation to be successful is likely to exceed their values, and the London plane tree is not worth consideration for relocation. Urban Forestry Ordinance outlines the planting of replacement tree requirements. It states that the commission shall require planting of replacement trees of equal accumulative diameter to the trees approved for removal and payment of replacement value fee of the street trees to be removed. When the replacement of a tree of equal diameter is not feasible, replacement at the largest practical diameter is as determined by the commission as required. In cases where the need for a street tree removal is without the fault of property owners, and the property owner is not otherwise responsible for the street tree, or, or if there are other good costs shown, the commission may waive requirement to plant a replacement tree or payment of a replacement value tree. According to the Arbus report, the value of the seven trees to be removed is 100,012,500. The staff recommends that the applicant should not be required to pay a replacement fee in addition to planting of new trees in light of the considerable expense that will be incurred in rehabbing the building as well as the construction of a new sidewalk on Hollis Street. In terms of public art, art code requires the city to expend an amount of 1.5% of the building costs for publicly accessible art on site of a city-sponsored project. Art in public space is defined as being in place which is accessible or visible to the general public a minimum of eight hours of business day. The project, the project satisfies this requirement by creating the drill box along the corner of 40th and Hollis Street, which will display art at all times. Our staff has included a condition of approval that will ensure that there is a display of artwork in the drill box area 24 hours, seven days a week. In terms of conformity with the general plan, the land use diagram classifies the site for public use, which is described as a variety of public and policy public uses, including government offices, fine police facilities, schools, community services, transit, transit stations, and ancillary facilities. The project is consistent with this description as the building was purchased by the city for re-adaptive reuse to provide space for the annual Emeryville Celebration of the Arts exhibition as well as year-round exhibit and performing arts users. Project is also consistent with the general plan, goal, and policy regarding vibrant scene diversity as well as the development of a community cultural center. In terms of land use, it falls in, in terms of the conformity to planning regulations, and in, under the category of land use, the site falls into public zone. The art center is classified as community assembly large, and such a use requires a conditional use permit. In terms of height and full area ratio, the site falls in the 30, 30 base centric by bonus foot height district and 1.0 base and 1.6 bonus FAR district. There is a small increase in FAR, but it is within the one-point base FAR. The existing height is 18 feet, and a certain portion of the mezzanine from theater element will, will reach about 24 feet, which is again under base height. In terms of parking, the required range for parking is zero to 82 spaces for this project. The city parking lot has 64 spaces for both the art center and the city offices. Fair, Fair and Pair has reviewed the amount of parking and circulation for the project, and they have identified a number of measures, including developing a TDM plan, and these have been incorporated as conditions of approval in the staff report. In terms of bicycle parking, the requirement is eight short-term and eight long-term, and the proposal is to provide eight short-term parking spaces and eight bike lockers. This is a significant tier-one structure, and the significant characteristics of this building include contrasting concrete lintel over door and two windows, industrial windows with concrete caps in relief and brickwork. Preservation and reuse of a significant structure needs a minor use permit with the finding that the proposed project will retain and enhance all or most of the features of the structure that may be significant. And as the elevations show, most of these features will be retained and are enhanced. In terms of design review, this site falls under the pedestrian privacy zone on both the Hollis and the 40th Street frontages, and the PPP zone calls for a 12-foot sidewalk corridor with eight feet of pedestrian pathway and four feet of landscape, a landscaped zone. On Hollis Street, the applicant will be building a new sidewalk that will maintain an eight-foot clear pathway with a four and a half foot of planter strip that will include six new trees. On the 40th Street frontage, the existing six-foot sidewalk will remain unchanged. However, a five-foot decomposed granite pathway adjacent to a landscape area has been proposed. Given that this is an adaptive reuse of a building with marginal change in its footprint, the need and the need to have a loading ramp, it is not possible to meet the sidewalks' dimensions recommended for pedestrian private zones. The site also falls under the Park Avenue District, and the project complies with the district plan by preserving and re-adapting an existing GAT building by providing a proposal that will encourage nighttime users and providing a cultural arts center and providing a permanent home for the annual Emeryville Celebration of the Art Exhibition. In terms of urban, general urban design guidelines, the project complies with city's guidelines by providing the following, the addition of beef and street landscaping, preserving and saying its historic industrial warehouse character through attention of architectural significant structures and retaining window design and proportions to add architectural interest. So in order for the commission to approve the project, findings need to be made for conditional use permit, for preservation or reuse of significant structure, for general design review findings, immediate design findings for signs. These have been, these findings can be made, and these have been extensively outlined in the staff report and the resolution and been incorporated in my presentation briefly today. In terms of environmental review, the project is exempt from state sequel guidelines under section which applies to alterations to existing facilities as well as with section which applies to infill development projects. So that concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to approve the use permit, design review permit, and tree removal permit subject to conditions of approval attached to the staff report. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer at this time.
Thank you, Maru. Do the commissioners have any questions at this time?
I have a couple of questions. So is, is the tree on 40th Street, is that being replaced elsewhere?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, and I was just curious about the very high cost associated with the tree replacement. Just curious how, how that was calculated and why, why that turned out to be so high?
This, this is outlined in the Arbus report. The Arbus report, they have, it describes the methodology used to come at the value of the tree. So, so that's how the total value of all the five trees was determined.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Thanks, Commissioner Sohany. Is there another commissioner wishing to ask a question? Okay, well, in that case, I think the, the, right now, the question would be if the applicant wants to make a presentation or wish to address the commission?
Um, I would ask that whatever member of the applicant team is making the presentation, can you please in the Zoom window, can you click on the Raise Your Hand icons so I can see who you are? David Dial and Tang, okay, I will elevate you both to panelists. And you can, oh, third one here, okay. All right, I have elevated these three to panelists. And. All right, there is Sarah, and we have David. You. Let's see. There's David. And Tyran, is Tyran going to be on screen as well? There he is. Okay, so take it away.
Great, and do we have slides?
You can share your screen if you have your slides there with you on your computer.
Okay.
If not, we do have them, and so we can show them.
I can present.
Okay.
See. Everybody can see the slides?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, Charlie, thank you, Maru. Good evening, commissioners. Dave Dial here from Orton Development. We are pleased to join you today to speak, to seek your approval for the Emeryville Art Center and the adaptive reuse of the Union Stampin Building. We're excited to partner with the city on this much anticipated project. It's been. It's been eighteen months since we first reviewed our initial thoughts and designs with you as a commission. The project has improved and evolved over time. We are here today to review a project that meets the city's goals and matches our approach to bringing forward a physically, a fiscally sustainable project of flexible spaces alive with activity. I'm here with two members of our team, Tyran Singh, project architect from Marcy Wong, Don Logan Architects, and Sarah Grandquist, landscape architect from Placeworks. Will provide a brief overview of the project and look forward to addressing your questions. Tyran?
He needs to unmute. There we go. Okay.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. This is Tyran Singh from Marcy Wong, Don Logan Architects. Tonight, I'll walk you through the site and the key exterior feature of the site, of the project. Next slide, please. Or can I control the slide? David, are you, okay. Okay, so the bold line around the site here shows the approximately standard of the project. This, this encompasses the Hollis Street sidewalk, the landscape along the Fortieth Street and the road of parking on the east side of the building and the area between the old city hall and the art center. So we now just limited the, the, the parking lot to the road of parking along the building instead of previously was the redoing the entire parking lot. Next slide, please. So this is the site circulation plan. In green is the loading path. In, in blue is the accessible pedestrian path and in red is the main circulation to the venue in the interior. So the truth of this is that all the loading is from the parking lot side with hand trucks or pellet jack going down ramps into the space. And the site is accessible back and forth around, all around. So there's entrance on the Hollis Street side and entrance on the parking lot side. It's all accessible. People can get in from both sides to the plate. Next slide, please. So to create an accessible entrance from the parking lot, which is about two to three feet above the interior floor, we have to put a ramp and a stair and adjust the existing parking along the building. This new layout includes three accessible parking spaces as opposed to previously two accessible parking space here. So two of them are on the left side and one is on the other end on the right side of the building. And it has accessible ramp, two accessible ramp that brings it down to, to the building. Also, the project will have two E V chargings, E V chargers installed, which will serve three spaces. And the remaining spaces will have E V charging capacity, capability ready. Next slide, please. So the building will, will be solar ready with around six thousand square feet of roof area designed to support the weight of the solar panels. It can potentially generate a hundred thirty thousand kilowatt hour per year, which is about forty-three percent of the building's estimated electricity usage. Next slide, please. The design team is working very closely with our lead consultant to enriching our goal for sustainability. This, this is a progress credit scorecard for, for lead. We're striving for lead gold equivalency. Next slide, please. The image on the left is a picture from the existing facade. It shows the brickwork with concrete lintels and the divided limestone windows. The project makes sure that these skinneken architectural features are retained. The image on the right showed the material palette for new construction. We'll look at the composition of these as we go over each facade. Next slide, please. So this is the main facade on Hollis Street. The existing brickwork from, fronting the street will be retained. The section that is set back from the street on the left up at the bottom picture here will be repaired, replaced by a new addition of the cafe with, in glass and aluminum. Next slide, please. So zooming on the Hollis Street elevation, we have from the left, the cafe with sliding windows and the second bay is the entrance bay that has a recess storefront and a bend of signage lining with the front face of the building. And to the right of those is, is the existing brick facade that we're maintaining. Next slide, please. Here's a rendering of the, this new corner. The cafe addition has sliding windows that can be opened to allow interactions from people passing by. The aluminum crowding extends overhead to the existing brick facade to frame the entrance court with a signage on top. With the addition of the cafe and outdoor seating, you'd be livid enough, you would live enough, not just the building, but this whole street. Next slide, please. This is how we envision this entry court. It is set back from the busy street and it opens to the sky. It is a perfect spot for outdoor events or, or other excitement to take place. A canopy with wood soffit over the storefront provides the weather protection. And through the glass storefront, you can see into the lobby, the cafe and the co-working space. And in the meadow like of the picture above the reception deck, there is a place where envisioning that Emeryville artists could install some art installation that, that becomes a part of this exhibit of the facility. Next slide, please. So this is the Hollis Street site in large plan. One of our main takeaway from the last study session is to mix the Hollis Street sidewalk and attractive pedestrian environment. In addition to being enriched by the cafe and the entry court, the Hollis Street sidewalk is redesigned with an eight-foot wide pedestrian path next to the building and a four-foot wide strip with planting and trees as a pathway from the vehicular way. So strutting down the street, one can also see into the artist studio, which was previously obscured by the trinity per trees that we have removed now. Next slide, please. So this is the Fortieth Street elevation. The shabby corrugated metal shed will be transformed into a glowing jewel box that become the highlight of this building. The tree in front of these jewel box will be removed and there's a transformer will also be relocated. Next slide, please. This is just zooming on the elevation. Next slide, please. The jewel box is envisioned as a showcase for the art center. There'll be ongoing exhibits here. You will activate this corner and bring art to whoever passes by this very busy intersection. For our comments from the study section, a path is added along the entire length of this glass wall so that people can get up close to the jewel box. The large opening in the existing brick wall further extends the sideline into the main gallery space. A backdrop could be set up to temporarily cover this brick wall if the, if the exhibit calls for it. So it's a very versatile place and allow a lot of connection for people and people passing by and really bring the art to, to everyone around here. Next slide, please. So on top of this slide is a plan for the Fortieth Street transit improvement for your reference. This is not part of this project. Basically, in the future, the sidewalk will be pushed further north to the property line and that a, a bike lane and a passenger zone and a bus lane will be created here. So we'll lose a bit of the, the landscape area to the sidewalk in the future. Next slide, please. This is the existing, this is the parking lot elevation. The existing parking lot facade includes a very long section of another attractive brick wall without any openings. And this section, as we described in the last study section, that we're going to replace this with a new frame, wood frame wall with metal siding for structural, structural safety reason. Next slide, please. This new metal siding wall allows for large new windows in a regular pattern to bring lights into the studios. Here we have a nice palette of existing brick, this new black metal and the wood in, in the same elevation. Next slide, please. The new facade parrots the language of the black corrugated metal shed that is replaced by the jewel box. The entrance from the parking lot is accentuated by the wood crowding on the walls and soffit of the recessed alcove and the illuminated signage above it. The use of wood is echoed by the wood soffit at the main entrance on the other side. Next slide, please. On the city hall side, the existing un-reinforced measuring wall will also be replaced by metal siding wall for structured, structural safety. Next slide, please. We envision that there will be outdoor seating and activities happening in the space between the city hall and our center. We have pine growing on this facade to soften it and make it more interesting. I will let Sarah, the landscape architect, tell you more about the mine wall and the landscape design. Thank you.
David, could you go ahead to the next slide, please? There were a few questions that came up during our review period and I wanted to just take my time to talk about them a little bit. And the, the first question was whether it was really viable to establish a vine cover on a north-facing wall. And we thought the best way to answer that question would be to go out and see what was happening in Emeryville. So this map is the result of a quick windshield tour of Emeryville and a little bit of West Berkeley. And what we were able to find were, you know, a good number of places. These are all north-facing walls that have established vine cover with the street addresses. There are three different types of vines that seem to do well for this purpose. The creeping fig that we're proposing in the landscape plan, Parthenocysis, which is Boston ivy, and then good old familiar English ivy. Of those three, we think that creeping fig will give us the most even cover. It's an evergreen plant, so it would give us year-round greenery. And that's what we're currently showing on the plans. I also wanted to just quickly address a question that came up about the, the decomposed granite path that runs along the jewel box. Well, I don't think we need to go back and look at the site plans. Hopefully, everyone remembers where that is. Right now, we're showing unstabilized crushed rock, but that crushed rock could very easily be mixed with a binder to create an ADA compliant surface that would also be porous. There are some new products that are being used around the Bay Area that give you a really good firm walking surface that also, thank you, that's great. You can see on the right hand, the lower right-hand corner where that slanting decomposed granite paving pathway walks along the glass of the jewel box. So that's a change that we'd be very happy to make in the final drawings. It would still have a soft, warm, natural looking appearance, but it would be a much firmer walking surface. And then finally, there was one slight discrepancy that I wanted to address that came up earlier in the presentation. The six trees that are being planted as replacement trees along Hollis Street will actually be hedge maple trees rather than olives, as I think was stated. We are incorporating a fruitless olive on Fortieth Street as a replacement for the plane tree that has to come out to clear the jewel box. And all of these tree species have been discussed with Molly Batch Elder, the city arborist. We will be providing structural soil, quite a bit of rooting volume under the sidewalk. And so hopefully, those trees and details meet the city's requirements. And that's all. Oh, we do have some pictures. Sorry. So these are just images of the plants that have been proposed. You can see the creeping fig along the frontage at Fortieth, along the jewel box. We're primarily relying on the hesperallo and the low mandrake. And the intention there is to provide a soft, low evergreen carpet that doesn't obscure the jewel box at all. Both of these species are very stable throughout the season and require very little maintenance and they're also low water use plants. I would be happy to describe any of these other plants if the council wants to ask about them. Go ahead to the next slide.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. The core of the project is a multi-disciplinary arts program that honors the local artistic resources and serves the entire Emeryville community as well as the Bay Area. The center will be the home of the, as Maru mentioned, the home of the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts and its galleries will provide exhibition space for diverse artists from Emeryville, the Bay Area and beyond. These exhibits will be done in partnership with local and national institutions and guest curators. The eighteen artist studios will be occupied by artists and makers in the classroom used by arts educators. We're providing naturally lit spaces as well as dark spaces to support a wide variety of art making. The studios range in size from two hundred and twenty-five square feet to over seven hundred. Many of the studios can be combined into larger spaces if the market desires. Storage will continue to be addressed as the operations of the project gets refined. It is a challenge for this space and seeing that we have a footprint of just about thirty thousand square feet, we're trying to be the most efficient in how we use that space. So as we talk to tenants, as we talk to studio users, as we meet with the Emeryville Celebration of the Arts, we will determine additional storage for, for the building. And the project had presented the watchman's unit on top of the, the northeastern corner and it is still a consideration. We're in the process of seeking sponsorship or funding for that part of the project and that will include additional storage. The gallery and forum shown here in blue, when combined with the studios shown in purple, make up two-thirds of the project. The remainder of the project includes commercial uses that will also serve to activate the project and will support the project's sustainability. Me Ru addressed the signage and the changes that we made in response to comments from the commission to the parking lot entrance. So I won't go into that, but we did want to review the signage one more time and introduce the concept that was introduced as a sponsorship page in the plan set. Vital to the fundraising that will support the gallery and the forum space will be naming opportunities for potential corporate and individual sponsors. We've included an example of how the building signage might reflect a sponsor's name and how spaces, including the studios, forum, gallery, might be named also. We anticipate a public program that will include brick and seat inscriptions and, of course, the donor wall. We are creating a project designed to be active throughout the day and week. The unique blend of arts and commercial uses will create a center robust with activity, breathing life into the corner of Hollis and 40th Streets. We look forward to public comments, hearing your thoughts, and are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. At this point, this is the time for questions that the commission may have for the applicant. Are there questions? Commissioner Keller?
Yeah, I just had one question on some of the photographs of the brick. The exist, the brick that's existing and going to be retained. I noticed there's a lot of just wear and effervescence and decay and stuff. And I was wondering if the project plans to kind of clean up and restore areas of the brick? Or are we leaving it just as it is?
The project is planning to certainly re-point all of the brick in the joints and certainly clean the exterior as well as the interior facade.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll just call on people. Commissioner Guerrero, do you have any questions? Commissioner Chafee?
Yeah, I do have a question, pretty specific. The bike lockers that are proposed are those of a size that could accommodate cargo bikes or family bikes? Have you specified that yet?
I'll ask Sarah to address that. Sarah, you're muted.
Sorry, I was trying to find my unmute button. It's a good point. I don't think they're large enough for an extra cycle or an extended bicycle. We can certainly look into other options. Maybe we can identify some kind of lockable cage or interior space.
Great, yeah, just keeping in mind the range of programming that you've outlined, I think, especially with evening programs. So it'd be great to be able to accommodate a range of bikes. And if it's okay, I have one more question right now. On the Hollis Street, where the new trees will go in, there's a planting strip there. Is there any plan for a bio-swell or any sort of permeable treatment there? Or would it just be kind of like plants and other, you know, sort of decorative things around the tree?
That's also an interesting question. So in the construction documents, there's a section that shows that planting area. The city requests that we do a pretty extensive preparation of the soil under the sidewalk. So we'll actually be digging out four feet deep and some four or five feet wide for each tree and filling that with Cornell mix, which is a structural soil. It would be difficult to also make that into a bio-infiltration facility. So I guess we've given priority to the tree root zone rather than stormwater for that area. Okay. Commissioner Mendez? Mendez?
Yeah, I have a question. Is there a plan for any maybe outdoor urban furniture or seating to be incorporated into the project? Either now or in the future?
We, Commissioner Mendez, we are negotiating a license for use of the courtyard between the building and town hall, the old city hall. So there would be furniture connected with the cafe principally in that space.
Okay. Sorry, if I may just chime in on that. With respect to this particular application, though, the entitlements only apply to the art center. The parcel that would have the outside seating is actually part of Old Town City Hall parcel. So it's two separate parcels.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. And then my last question is, can you repeat again what type of sponsorships you were thinking? I know you mentioned the sign, the bricks. Were there any other sponsorship opportunities?
We are considering the naming of the major spaces, including all 18 of the studios, the naming of the forum space, of the gallery, and of the jewel box, as well as the potential of the naming of the project.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Vice Chair Young, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's really a great presentation. I did have one question that I thought, in this decompositional granite idea that they were using, and you mentioned that there was some kind of permeable hardened surface. Does that make the granite kind of a smooth or rough surface? Can you describe what that new product that you're referring to might be?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I don't have, I could look up the name for you, but I don't want to take up your time. It's called Organic. I can send the product to you after the meeting. It's a binder that makes a permeable hard layer. It's been used recently in Hayward for a playground that just opened there this last summer. And the installation looks great. I would be happy to send you photos from that site.
Yeah, I would definitely like to see that. I think it's a cool material. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Sahani, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was just curious to understand. So if my recollection from the 40th Street project is correct, I think there is some sort of a bulb out extension into 40th Street. I can't remember the length to which that extends, but I was curious to know if the design team had only started, including these landscape intervention, past that point since that part of the sidewalk will be reconstructed? Was my question clear?
Yes. I was going to to bring, well, I'm sorry if that won't work. Commissioner Sahani, seeing that the improvements on 40th Street are a couple of years away in our understanding, we are planning to make improvements into space that will eventually be improved by the 40th Street transit improvements. The line, the sidewalk actually moves back into the, up to the property line for this parcel. So the improvements that we're making from the sidewalk back to the property line will be redone when the 40th Street is redone.
Yeah, no, I understand that bit. My question was more on the improvements on Hollis Street. So there is a bulb out at the intersection of 40th and Hollis that is being proposed. And I can't remember for sure what the length of that bulb out is. And I'm just concerned that the first tree on Hollis Street, you know, close to 40th Street, may be impacted. So that's what I was asking if the design team had checked that.
We have and have coordinated it with the improvements that wrap around the corner to Hollis Street.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, I have a couple of questions quickly for the applicant. You mentioned the lead equivalent. Do you have any plans to have a third party verification? Because that can often be the difference between being an equivalent versus getting certified.
Sure, I'll let Tyrann address that.
Yeah, yeah. So we have the lead consultants, and we got to do all the documentation, do every little detail, except submitting it to the Green Building Council for actual lead credit. So we're doing everything except the actual certification process. It's not just somebody checking out, say, this is down here. It is, the lead consultant will lead us to preparing all the documentation that's needed for actual certification process. But the cost of submit, the actual certification was, I mean, we're not going through the cost of submitting it and getting it actually certified.
Right. And my question was, and just to clarify, it sounds as though you are preparing the documentation with a lead consultant, but you are not doing the third party verification because that would be a condition of actual certification? Okay, great. Another question about the solar estimation that you were doing. The existing building has a fairly complex roof shape. It also has skylights. I didn't hear a discussion of sort of that interaction between a solar area or area for solar ready and how that affects skylights and getting light into the center of the building. Can you talk to that a little?
Sure. Could we print up that roof plan? Maybe, let's see. So basically, we have selected, we worked really hard to find a place for the solar panel because the existing roof is in such a bad shape that the most of the area is not capable of supporting the new solar panel. So the area we are including here is the new, this new flat roof, this flat roof area that we're going to do for the new, future watchman unit addition that currently doesn't have any skylights. And also the cafe addition that is also new on the northwest corner that doesn't have any skylights. And the existing portion of the roof that might be able to take up the load of the solar panel are highlighted in here, this big, big bottom here. There's this one, a couple of skylights in these zones, but the area calculation, we're taking into consideration of these skylights and the area calculation doesn't include those skylights. So I think the solar panel won't affect light coming in through these skylights. We will keep the solar panel away from these skylights enough distance that you won't block the light coming into the space.
Okay. I have one other, thank you. I have one other question about the watchman's unit. In this presentation was the, you know, I heard a little more of the detail around that you're looking for a donor, and it's potentially still a component of the project. I wondered, and this may actually be something that Charlie has to answer or staff, how does the, if you were to find a donor, how does that affect the approval process? When would that get integrated into the project?
Well, I think depending on how extensive it is, but I, there's a standard condition of approval that we've included here that we do on all projects, which is that minor modifications to approved plans can be approved by the director, that is me. And assuming that the watchman's unit would not be a major change to the building, that could be approved administratively as a minor change to these plans.
Okay, great. Those are my questions. And I wanted to move on, if there are no other questions, to the public hearing. It would be open at this time?
I would ask that anyone who wants to speak at the public hearing would click on the raise your hand icon on your Zoom screen, and we will call on you.
Just a quick reminder that there are three minutes allowed for every speaker.
Oh, Chair Thompson, I believe there is a script to read now before the public comment, before the public hearing.
There may be. Yes, there is. Now it is time for the public comment or for this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments relating to this item should have begun submission of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, please press star nine, and the clerk will call on you at the appropriate time. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online comment card or whether anyone has raised the hand to make audio comments. So if either of those things happen?
Sherry, are you hearing us? I'm not sure if Sherry is in communication with us, although she did. Oh, by the way, I didn't tell you about 45 minutes ago, I got a text from Sherry saying that we are now being broadcast.
Okay, great.
So it's about the first 25 minutes, it was not broadcast, but we are now being broadcast. I have not received any online speaker cards, and I'm just looking through the list of attendees of the Zoom meeting. I do not see raised hands.
Well, the, how long should we keep the public comment period open? What's your recommendation?
Oh, Sherry just sent me a text. She says she can't help with the public speakers. So, but I do, as I said, I do get the same emails that indicate if there has been a speaker card submitted, and I do not have any emails about any speaker cards. Andrea, do you have a sense of how long we should wait?
Well, we've been talking about it for a little bit, and so...
I'm installing.
There are no raised hands, and there are no...
Okay, I think we're probably good to move on then.
Okay. I will officially close the public hearing at 7:45. So now, at this time, I'd like to bring the item back to the commission for deliberation. Is there anyone who would like to go first? Commissioner Chafee?
I'd actually like to pass on to somebody else, since this is the first time that I've been participating in an item like this.
Sure, sure. I'll go to some older folks. Vice Chair Young?
Whoa, okay, well, yeah, wonderful, wonderful piece. I really like it. I have some notes over here. Let me close a window so I can get to them. I want to applaud the new entries. I think they're, I think they're really wonderful. I think they're really vibrant. And I think that there's a very careful attention on both, you know, just basically the key entry on the main part of the building. And then, of course, kind of given a similarity on the back. And I think the idea of having the natural materials on one side and having the colors on the ceiling, I think it's, I think it really reads well. I like the attention on how, just keeping the plan where it is and that the area is being broken up. I think it's really great. I think it's strong. I also, my eyes are getting worse a little bit. Think there's a long, a strong accent to the areas where people consider around the building itself. I think those are, those are really inviting. I think it's really strong. I'm kind of wondering why there's been really no attempt to try to do a second logo effect. I think, I know the first one was a little interesting where this, we brought it up the last time, and then it was like almost devoid of it. But the simplicity of the, you know, sans serif block letter of Emeryville Art Center is kind of cool. I think it's okay. I think there just could be just something else. I'm not sure, I'm not sure what it is. I like the idea and the thought on the EV parking. I think that was kind of cool and where they're placed. I think it, I think it meets it really great. And I really like the fact that there's not a lot of changes to the parking stripes because the good white parking is good when you don't really have, you know, the car thing is not going to be that much of an issue anymore. In terms of... In terms of replacing the trees, I think the decision to actually do that is a good thing and then work on like the all year seasonal plants are really great. I think it's really thoughtful. I feel that the 225 square feet by 700 square feet, super desirable. I think it'd be kind of neat if storage is an issue. I know there's an overall storage and each person has their own storage. Is there an interesting way to store ahead with it being safe? I don't, I don't know if that's something that one was thinking about. And I like the fact that how the gallery could be supported by commercial product, you know, by commercial projects. Maybe we have several art and gallery locations throughout Emeryville and an invitation to each one of them might be kind of neat to pull off. So thank you very much. I think that's, I think that's really my main comments right there.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Young or Vice Chair Young. Commissioner Guerrero.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. My comments will be pretty brief. I appreciate all the adjustments made to the project based on the feedback that we gave to the process. I think that they addressed the issues that we brought up well. I would say that in terms of the ADA compliant walkway on the 40th Street side, I appreciate Sarah went into some more detail about the organic binder that can be used there because I would like to see that be more of a firm surface than the granite that could be moved around a bit so that everybody can use that path. And I think that was a great recommendation by Commissioner Mendez. I appreciated seeing how the project interacts with the 40th Street future plans for the transportation hub. That was great. And, and would say that, you know, at this point, I'm excited about the project and think that this is gonna be a huge benefit for the city far city and would feel comfortable approving it as is presented today. And there's one part of it that's, that's giving me a little bit of heartburn and it was, I would say that the, the naming of the actual center is something that, you know, like today we're approving potentially like what the size looks like, but not necessarily the name. And so as that starts to be, you know, figured out, my advice for the team that's planning this here is that we find some way to balance, you know, the, the name that's, that is presented to us today and any potential donors. So I'm thinking about Salesforce Park in San Francisco and how it's such a great space with that park was named Salesforce Park. And so I feel like in this case, I'd really love to retain the name Emeryville in some capacity because that calls out a piece in the name that's really important to me, at least, and I think so a lot of the people here that live in Emeryville. And so that's my, the only piece that I would give feedback that at this point that I feel a little uneasy with, but I think that in terms of design and use of space, that you've all done a great job in addressing our feedback and look forward to seeing this move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Keller.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Just a couple remarks. Since we're kind of fresh in the mind, I'm gonna take on to Commissioner Guerrero's comment. The naming opportunities, I understand, working for a public institution before UC Berkeley or worked for the City of Carmel, we redid a theater for $20 million. So naming opportunities are really important for funding these projects. I like the Brooklyn, the naming opportunities, the room, the forum. I think if we name the building, I still think the building should be the Emeryville Center for Arts and that if it becomes the Jones Center for Art, I think that's great. I think the opportunity would be to use that name inside the, the facility itself, leave the, leaving the outside of the building known as the Emeryville Center for the Arts. When I saw that, again, I didn't quite get the heartburn thing, but I cringed a little bit. It just kind of had a little bit too much commercialism to me and this is really the Emeryville Center for the Arts. So if you use that naming opportunity, I just asked that we maybe present that somewhere in the reception area or something like that, but not on the building itself. My other things is I'm fine with the tree removal that we're talking about, London Plain Tree, like many of our London Plain Trees are not really healthy in this area because we didn't have engineered soil at the time. And I'm really happy to hear we're replacing that tree with the olive trees. So we are still getting seven trees out of this, but I am thankful we're using the other trees along Hollis Street. And I do like the idea that we're putting those in a planter strip to buffer the traffic from the pedestrians. That's always a much more comfortable environment, so I'm really, really happy with that. I'm happy where the temporary or short-term bicycle parking is. I think it's visible from the cafe and the, the streets. So I think people parking their bikes, they're more comfortable that they are within sight and not hidden somewhere. I would suggest looking for vendors that do create some sort of locker for cargo bikes and et cetera. The building I live in has some lockers from a company. I'd be happy to share that name with you. They seem to have a pretty good variety of lockers if you need a vendor for that. I have, my bike is another, it's not a cargo bike. And I'm, I'm really fine with the watchman's unit not happening. I never could really understand the need for that, but if it comes back later on, I don't think it impacts the visual part of the, of the building as we're looking at it now or as it will be used. I really appreciate the work that your team has done on a mix of uses for the Center for the Arts and it's not just an art gallery or, you know, I like hearing you call these maker spaces rather than just studios or something like that because I, I think that gives us a lot of opportunities for a varied artist, which there are many in the community who don't have space to work in. So I'm, I'm very happy with that. I'm also happy with your programming of the whole facility for its economic viability that you use maker space and you're having classes in there and, and the theater as well. So I think with the myriad of ideas that you have, that is, will maintain its economic viability and will not become an empty jewel box that we can't afford to upgrade. So I really, really do appreciate that and I think that it's going to make sure that we have a viable center for the, for the foreseeable future. And I thank you for taking our comments previously into consideration and I'm really looking forward to this project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Sahani, do you have comments?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to the design team and the staff for working so hard on this project. I'm really excited of the prospects of having a cultural center right on 40th Street next to the city hall. And I feel that this would be, this will add a lot of vibrancy, sorry, vibrancy and diversity to the city of Emeryville. I really appreciate that, you know, an old building was taken and reconfigured and redesigned into, into something which will be a cultural piece for the city of Emeryville. Just a few comments or more notes per se. I really like the overall juxtaposition of old and new material. It really plays well and shows well in all the drawings. And the jewel box on 40th Street is definitely an iconic feature that, that kind of, you know, enhances not only for 40th Street, but the whole civic and cultural nature of, of that particular parcel. Like Commissioner Keller mentioned, I really like the use of works of various uses within the building, co-workspaces, cafes, artists, it just allows for the building to be activated at most of the times of, of the day and even in the evenings. And the, the spaces within the building, like the presenter was mentioning, gives opportunity for Emeryville artists to showcase their work. So that, that kind of adds to the whole positive nature of the building and the sense of community that it's trying to achieve. I also like the way the, the streetscape improvements have been incorporated on Hollis Street and, you know, 40th Street project would also bring other improvements along those and this will really, you know, improve the whole pedestrian bicycle connections to this facility. Really like the way the, the design team has used landscape and other features to enhance the, the sidewalks as well as the building and while not forgetting the, to, to make sure that all these circulation limits are ADA compliant. So I want to congratulate the team for adding this new element and I'm really excited to, to see it move to the next phases of design and construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mendez?
Yeah, I have a couple of really quick comments. One, I really do appreciate the addition of that path along the jewel box and I would definitely like to push for it to be ADA accessible. So for me, that's kind of an important thing to, maybe an important change to make to that. Also, I do also appreciate the entrance at the parking lot that you made it a little bit larger so it makes, it makes it feel a little bit more inviting and people can navigate towards the, the entrance a little bit easier. I would like to see more outdoor spaces being incorporated for the community. I agree with Commissioner Guerrero and Keller that we should retain the name Emeryville in, in the building. You know, this, this is a community space and every, anytime a space is named after your community, you, the people in, in the community have a sense of pride. And so I would, I would push to keep the name Emeryville on, in the outside of the building. And I think that there, there's a missed opportunity in the corner of 40th and Hollis Street. That corner right there is, there's an Emery Go-Around stop as well as an AC Transit stop. So I think that would be a good opportunity to incorporate maybe an outdoor space that people that are waiting for the go-around or the AC Transit can utilize. And also actually, if you are thinking of using the sponsors, that could be maybe something you can offer your sponsor to either name that bench after them and, and then have that, have that basically be paid for by the sponsor. If, if, you know, the budget, the budget for outdoor seating is kind of in question. Another opportunity that I think could be, we could incorporate some outdoor seating would be at the entrance. You showed a rendering of that space possibly being used for gatherings, for a performance. And I could just see if we have like a permanent seating space right outside of the entrance, I could see somebody just kind of sitting there relaxing, maybe they're waiting for a friend, maybe they're just out there reading. So I think that's another great space to kind of activate also with an outdoor seating. And that's about it.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez. Commissioner Chafee?
Great, thank you. Well, most of my comments have already been made so far, so I'll try and keep it short, but I'll start with the naming. I also agree that it would be great to retain Emeryville and the name is posted outside at least. And that kind of goes along with my comment, which is related to the space or the location. I think there's a great opportunity to bring this space together in a way that both represents and invites people from the southern part of Emeryville in a way that a lot of other projects that have been built recently in Emeryville have not. And so I spoke with David Dye about this a bit, but, you know, just going forward, I would hope that any effort possible could be made to both understand what the community needs in the space, the community south of the center and also right in the media area, and then also to represent sort of the, the views and the art and the culture coming out of that part of our city. So other than that, fully agree with maximizing use of outdoor space. I know space is at a premium, but one thing that I would love to see in a future time is some sort of a natural play area. If there's any sort of available space that could be left open for all ages to use, it doesn't have to be fancy, but just a place where if there's a performance going on inside, if people are looking at art and then they want to take a break and go outside and just have a place to either sit down and reflect or to climb on top of something that's naturally inspired, I think that could be a really nice compliment. I never liked to see trees removed and at first I was a little bit worried about the tree removal aspect, but I think it's, I understand it now. I feel like it's being dealt with really well. I'd also just like to encourage in future design to do anything possible to minimize the heat issues that might come from having so much sidewalk and street space on that corner of Hollis and 40th. And as it becomes more of a pedestrian and bicycle friendly area, there will be more people using active transportation there. And so having some respite from the heat, I think is going to be even more necessary. Very glad to hear about the solar ready roof. If there's any opportunity to push it higher than 43% of the building's energy needs, either by increasing the solar space, which sounds like it'll be difficult, or by decreasing the energy needs within the, within the building, I, I would love to see that happen as well. I think that is everything I wanted to mention, other than that, I'm really excited that it's such a flexible space and seems like it's going to address all of the, or needs across many different types of ages and populations, both within Emeryville and drawing them from outside. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Chafee. Yeah, I'm gonna add my comments in. I did want to congratulate the team. I think this is a great project in terms of having this cultural element, which Emeryville has been looking to see for a long time. So it's great to see it getting this far. I agree, I do like this street tree. The effort to make healthy trees that has gone into this, the effort to improve the sidewalk, I appreciate that response. I also agree that the, there have been some project improvements around circulation, around the exterior and being able to come up to the jewel box. The, I think one question I would have or I would encourage the applicant to continue to think about the operational aspects around cargo bikes and storage, things that are always sort of hard to find places for, but really make or break a place and whether families and a diversity of people can enjoy that place. So just, just keeping an eye on that and trying to, trying to work out those relationships as much as possible. I would also encourage really finding a third party to verify environmental elements. There certainly is a cost with certification, but there's also, it's really important to make sure things are operating and happening the way that they are planned in real life. And, and I would also second Commissioner Chafee's comment about really increasing, reducing the energy demand, increasing local production. Any of that would be fantastic as we continue to try and meet state targets around GHT emissions. That is the, some of my comments. I think it's a really great project. I wanna, I do want to congratulate the team and say the mix of uses and the, and this as a cultural center has really come along. So thank you. So at this time, the, I think I'm gonna call for a motion for approval. This is a public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the project subject to the attached conditions of approval.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, great. We have a motion and a second.
All right. Are you ready to?
So.
The motion was made by Commissioner Keller and seconded by Commissioner Sahani. On the motion, Commissioner Chafee.
Aye.
Commissioner Guerrero.
Aye.
Commissioner Keller.
Aye.
Commissioner Mendez.
Aye.
Commissioner Sahani.
Aye.
Vice Chair Young.
Aye.
Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days. Congratulations.
Fantastic. All right, so we're gonna move on to the next agenda item. This is a study session for the BMR Emeryville Center of Innovation. Maru, are you also doing the presentation for this?
Yes, I am.
And I wanted to just announce that I'm gonna go ahead and recuse myself and I'll be leaving the Zoom meeting.
Oh.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez.
Commissioner Mendez, sorry, you need to state exactly what your financial interest is in the matter.
So my, BMR is a client of my employer and so they're considered a source of income for me. So that's, that's the reason for, yep, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendez.
May I begin? Chair Thompson?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So this is a third planning, a third study session. So this is a third planning, a third study session for the BMR project. You last saw this project in April of this year. Just to get you oriented again of the PUD PDP campus that was originally approved when it was known as Chiron. And, and since then, ownership has changed. This is the buildout of the Chiron PUD PDP. It is an approval of 14 new buildings. And this is an existing conditions of the campus. And this slide shows the properties that are owned by BMR and which are the focus of study session today. So the main difference between the last time you saw this project and this time is addition of two new buildings. At the last time, you saw two office buildings, B1, B2, B2 slash 3, and a parking garage on Horton Street, known as B13 slash 14. Now, the applicant is proposing addition of two new buildings, which would be again same R and D buildings and then known as B8, B and B8A. Just to, this was what you saw last time when you were here in April. So some of the comments that were expressed by the commission was the concern regarding the impact of the garage on Sherwin-Williams Building D as well as impact on the Sherwin-Williams Building B2. Concern was also expressed with the parking count. There was a suggestion to include shadow studies. There was a preference to have sidewalk widths between seven and eight feet, feet wide. There was also suggestion that the plant pallet be drug resistant and be friendly. There was a suggestion to include a wayfinding program for the campus, a pallet for street infrastructure and materials, addition of green infrastructure, outline of ramps inside the garage building and the location of AD and. There was also a suggestion for a potential water feature somewhere in the campus. There was also suggestion that the applicant build a model for the proposal for better reading of the project. So changes to a proposal, like I mentioned, there's addition of two new R and D buildings, bringing the total number of R and D buildings to four and total number of buildings in the proposal to five. The addition of building A and A B will complete the PUD's buildout that is within the BMR. In terms of sequence of construction, will be the building or the garage building. And B1 will be built first, followed by construction of Building B2, 3, and then buildings B8, A and A2B. Construction is anticipated at this time to begin in fall of 2021 with pour and shell construction for the last two buildings to be completed by 2027. The other modifications that the applicant has made are to the parking garage building. One is the reduction of the parking count to 1,991 spaces. So at the first study session, the parking count was 2,400, which then got reduced to a little over 2,000. And now this is under 2,000. There was a revision of red staircases on the parking garage. They are now bronze or gold. There's a provision of an approximately 50 foot setback from the Horton Landing Park Eastman, thereby allowing an additional of about 9,000 square feet of landscape open space adjacent to the city's Horton Landing Park. There's a provision of additional 10 foot setback on the lower stories along the western facade, increasing the separation between building face of Sherwin-Williams Building D and the parking structure to about 37 feet. In addition, there's a provision of setback on the upper stories along the western facade and creating a distance of 81 feet between the building face of Sherwin-Williams Building and the parking structure. There's addition of green wall from levels three to five on the western facade facing Sherwin-Williams Building. And because of these setbacks, there is an increase in height of the building by two levels to accommodate the parking that they need. So the height of the building is increased from 82 feet 5 inches to 102 feet 10 inches and which is well within, under the height prescribed by the PUD PDP. So this table kind of shows you different buildings, the maximum heights, occupied floors and the size. So the total R and D space that will be created by this FTP is a little over a million square feet. This kind of shows you the building, the various buildings. So these two buildings, they have not changed since the last time you saw them. There has been modifications to the parking garage and we have two new buildings, building A and B here. And this is the rendering of the two new buildings as seen from 53rd Street. You will note that they are very similar in terms of materials. They are fairly similar to the other two buildings. And I will let the design team go further details into the design of the buildings. And this is the view at 53rd and. And this is the view from 53rd Street looking west. This is the garage building and this section basically shows the different setbacks that I just mentioned between the Sherwin-Williams Building and the garage building. And so you can see the setback at the lower levels, 37 feet. And at the upper levels, you have about 81 feet. And this rendering kind of shows that interface between the two buildings. This is the building structure seen, as seen from Horton Street and it shows the change in color of the staircases. It used to be red and now it's bronze gold. And this slide shows the intersection of this building and the adjacent space with the Horton Landing Park. And this rendering will kind of shows how the space will look like once more the projects are built. This shows the vehicular circulation between the various buildings. Also shows the loading and how that will occur. And this is the bicycle circulation, not too different than what we had seen, except of course for the introduction of the two new buildings, A and B. And this is actually the pedestrian circulation. And you'll see that, before going to that, you'll see that a lot of new open spaces have been created between the two new buildings and as well as there were open spaces between Building B1 and B2 slash 3 that were shown to you in April. I'm going to let the discussion on the open spaces to this design team, because I know that they have been refining these spaces and what you'll be, what they'll be showing you today will be slightly different from what you have in your plans. In terms of parking, the building, the parking garage will provide parking for the existing building before, which is a little under 300,000 square feet, and the project proposal of four new buildings, which is under a million square feet. This brings the total R and D space for which the parking garage is being constructed to a little, about 1.2 million square feet. Typically, research and laboratory businesses need the space for lab and office on a half and half basis. The approved PUD PDP specifies 0.81 spaces per employee as the parking ratio for the PDP campus. The total number of employees estimated to occupy the proposed buildings and the existing building is a little under 3,000. So the total number of parking spaces required by the PDP based on the parking ratio of 0.81 spaces per employee is 2,401 spaces. The proposed parking is 1,991. Therefore, the proposal provides 410 less parking spaces than called out by the PDP. If this proposal were to be looked at, the current parking requirements and then the numbers that work out are the, are according to today's standards, 2,265 spaces. And that is again, less about 136, less than what the project is, what project is proposing. So by both counts, by what the PUD specifies as well as by our current planning standards, what is being proposed is less than both of those two parameters. In terms of staff comments, staff appreciated a design of the two new buildings, noting that adequate focus had been given to the design of open plaza areas around the proposed buildings. Given the amount of glazing in our, in the four buildings, it was suggested that the applicant should consider on a volunteer basis incorporating some of the applicable guidelines in the recently adopted word friendly design guidelines. It was also suggested that the green wall that is proposed on the garage building should wrap around the knot wall of the building as well. And there was some discussion around public art and the opportunity provided to enhance the public realm by including, using creative etchings on the glass facades that would also have the effect of making the building word friendly. Both public works and planning staff noted that the issues around the proposed frequent importance street would be better understood and analyzed once an active transportation assessment was done for the project. The project was also reviewed by the BPA at their August meeting. The committee members expressed appreciation of opening up Chiron Way and making the campus open to public. Several member expressed concern of having a parking garage on Horton Street instead of preference or, and stated a preference for a stop sign on Horton Street instead of traffic signal. A preference for having class four bike lanes or more separated bike lanes was also expressed. One member questioned the need for allowing any vehicles on Chiron Way. There was a concern that the retail space in the parking garage may stay vacant. The need to have food proof bicycle lockers and car park bicycle parking spaces was noticed, as was the need for the project to think about micro mobility, basically electric scooters. Need, the need to make the plaza and open space programming for all age groups and not just employees was expressed. There was a suggestion of locating the campus security office in the parking garage was made by way of activating the street, especially at night. And those were basically their key comments. In terms of issues that the staff and applicant would like feedback from the commission is regarding the new buildings that have been shown today, Building A and Building B, and whether the commission have any comments on the design of these new buildings. Regarding the garage building, is the commission satisfied with the device designed at the parking garage? And any other design comments that the commission may have for both the buildings itself as well as for the site plan for the overall project? So that concludes my presentation. I'm aware of any questions.
Thanks, Maru. So are there, do any of the commissioners have questions for Maru? Okay, seeing none, this is the time when the applicant would present. Would the applicant like to discuss elements of the project?
I would like to ask the members of the applicant team who are going to present to raise their hands. I see a couple here. I will promote you to panelists so that you will be able to share your screens. Oh, you got a whole bunch. Oh. Ethan, you are on a phone, so I cannot promote you to panelist, but you can talk. Think, should be able to talk.
Thank you, Charlie. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. The, let me just make sure my settings are good here. Audio, video coming through. Thanks. The. Just give me one second while I set up my screen. Okay. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Salim Pyapaly, VP of Development at Biomet Realty. Joining us to present the Emeryville Center of Innovation today will be John McCow, Principal at Flat Architects, Sarah Moose Thompson, Senior Associate at Bionic, and Ethan Wash, Senior Project Manager at Biomet Realty. This is our third virtual session. And I want to make the point here, you know, we really appreciate the city's efforts. It's a lot of work, you know, to keep the meetings and the process active and running, you know, through the shelter in place and COVID and so on. So thank you for that. Next slide. We, since our prior session in April, we've been hard at work and we've got some really good content to share with you today. Next slide. The updates you see today reflect a lot of great feedback we've received from the planning commissioners in our meetings with them, in our previous study session as well. Feedback from city staff, BPA, Bike East Bay and Lennar. We also have additional community meetings that we're lining up shortly. Next slide. We, we see continued strength in the R and D sector. This slide is illustrating a long range trend in NIH funding and FDA drug approvals. These are basic fundamental factors that are driving growth, job creation, income, health and wellness. This is a long range trend that we see continue. Despite all the headlines, the economic headwinds, we continue to see strength. We're seeing a lot of, you know, in every market we were operating in, we see a lot of questions around where the future might be and, you know, other sectors, the office business, for example, there's a lot of headwinds and trouble, but we're continuing to see strength in our R and D sector. I thought I'd flag that just as an indication of where, you know, the next few years might head. We remain optimistic. The, the basic premise of what we're hoping to accomplish here in Emeryville is actually quite simple. You know, we're asking to allow us to grow the research ecosystem right here in Emeryville. This is the future. Next slide. We, we have executed this strategy very successfully a number of times in the US, in the US and in the UK in multiple markets. The, the blue chip companies that we support in turn are doing some really amazing work with therapeutics and drug development. A number of the logos at the bottom of the page, probably a majority by now, are companies doing really important COVID work at the front lines. Next slide. The, if you look, if you look at the, the bottom of the slide, those numbers with the percentages are telling a story. What, half of our customers are the world's biggest R and D companies. And then the rest of them are arranged small to medium, early to mid-stage. And these are the companies that grow and flourish within the ecosystem over, over the years as we quote unquote tend to the garden in our support of the industry. You'll see this theme referenced later on in the presentation as well as we talk about the range of building sizes that we proposed to bring online in Emeryville. And it relates to the addition to this FTP application of the two buildings in the middle of our campus, 8A and 8B. Just as a process comment, we have about 60 slides. So we'll maintain a very brisk pace to allow enough time for. So we'll maintain a very brisk pace to allow enough time for Q and A at the end, but also for the commission to focus on areas that maybe of particular interest to you. As you look through these slides here, just a few bookmarks, you'll see five highlights from our team. One, the addition of eight A and eight B, which is the final piece of the puzzle in the center of the campus. And this internal allows us to increase the range of building sizes that we're bringing online. Flat and Bionic will elaborate, but eight A and eight B are shaping up to be a really fantastic centerpiece anchoring our campus. It also has in it a small legacy story that you'll hear about. Bookmark two, the parking ratio. I know this is a topic of high interest to every one of you. We've heard, we've heard a lot of feedback on our garage size and the ratio. And in particular, the paradigm shift that Emeryville wants to be part of or and lead. We hear that loud and clear and we are there with you in the paradigm shift. The the ratio, the parking ratio that that you're going to that you're seeing here is 1.63 per thousand. And if we exclude the lease that we already signed with Zimergen, literally a few weeks or a few months after we acquired the campus, the six hundred spaces that Zimergen needed required in their lease to essentially stay and grow in Emeryville. We set that aside. That's a done deal for the forward leasing for future tenants. We are agreeing to a 1.5 per thousand. That is our commitment to be part of the paradigm shift. We'll do the hard work. We're going to take the economic risk and do the heavy lifting, but that you'll see those numbers later on in the presentation. The other bookmarks as flat and Bionic and even walk through the rest of the slides. You'll see a host of bicycle oriented features. You'll see a range of open spaces accessible to the community over three and a half acres and street level retail amenities that we've now had a chance to think through and detail with some more resolution. You also hear about the celebration and opportunity to celebrate Emeryville's R and D legacy. With that, let me hand it over to the flat team to present the rest of the content. John McCow.
Thank you, Salil. Just a sound check. Can everyone hear me? Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay. Thank you for the interest introduction, Salil, and commissioners appreciate you taking the time this evening to listen to our story. What we're going to talk about tonight is the culmination of more than nine months of study, discussion, design and development, and you participated in a lot of that. We've talked to this commission formally on two separate occasions, once in December and once in April. And we received valuable feedback and input through those discussions. In addition, we've talked to city staff on multiple occasions to gain further insights. And we've met with many of the commissioners individually to talk about the details of the project and receive specific feedback. And in general, we've the feedback that we've received, but very supportive of the overall project. And while there's been some highlights of areas of concern, we've worked hard to address those. And we believe that the design progress that we want to share with you tonight represents a cohesive solution that A doesn't waver from your visual original vision that we had for the campus. But yet has responded, we think, fully to the comments that we've received along the way. So we look forward to presenting the project and hearing your feedback as we move through this. So I want to go back to some of those original key principles, as we call them, guiding principles for the campus and reiterate those and just emphasize that these continue to be very important to the campus and the primary focus of what we're trying to accomplish here. And the first and foremost of those is breaking down the original super block buildings that were the fundamental components of the original Chiron Campus Plan and Preliminary Development Plan. And as you may recall, those represented buildings that filled the entire blocks from fifty third to Stanford Street with an unbroken series of building spaces. And so the goal here is to break that super block down into smaller footprint building areas and then allow these spaces showing in green here that where people can move freely from the center of the campus to the outlined areas and vice versa. The second point here is to emphasize that in order for that movement to happen, we have to remove the fences. As you know, the entire site is currently fenced. There's the barrier that you see here in the image on Chiron Way and fences around the entire perimeter of the Chiron property at between Hollis and Stanford and fifty third street. And we want to open those areas up so that we can facilitate that movement down Chiron Way and through the campus. And in doing so, item three, we're going to create this network of publicly accessible and pedestrian oriented open spaces, both at the perimeter and at the center of the campus within the campus core, which are framed by these building elements. And as illustrated in item four, these new spaces will be community accessible and they'll have features that will appeal equally to both the building tenants and to the local community. So that these spaces can be active during the workday, during the evenings and during the weekends. And in addition, they'll connect directly with the Emeryville Greenway and the Horton Landing Pedestrian and Bicycle Overpass. So they actually become an integral part of the community circulation network. A very important aspect of how we think this commuter needs to relate or this project needs to relate to the community. The fifth key principle that we've been talking about throughout the development of the project is the idea of these world-class design of buildings. Modern state of the art form, function and appearance, high sustainability credentials and a high degree of transparency to lighten views, obviously recognizing the bird friendly design aspects that were talked about in Maru's presentation and comments that we've received. Now, we recognize these buildings must be respectful of the original iconic building for design. As you know, I worked on that project that was one of my projects in conjunction with Ricardo Legareta and I have a great deal of affinity for that and we you know, utmost respect for that and the need to relate carefully to that. Which we will do using materials and scale to create the linkages between the buildings. But with the idea that complementing and framing that building for design is much more appropriate than trying to mimic the, you know, unique and iconic character of that building. We're also in this particular aspect of world-class design, want to emphasize the importance of the signature tower at the corner of Hollis and Emeryville. That was originally incorporated into the PDP document that was approved in nineteen ninety five. And while the building will be shorter, it we still feel that having taller presence at that location is very important to establish the importance of this this campus and really mark the corner at Stanford and Hollis. The final key component, and we've heard this multiple times in all of our conversations, is the creation of a bicycle friendly place connected to the Emeryville networks that exist. And we'll talk about that in a lot more detail as we move through the presentation. So next slide, please. So we've organized the discussion tonight into four key areas of discussion. First, we'll deal with the campus design, talking about the buildings themselves, the configuration, the elements, the architectural character. And a little bit about how these align with the principles that I just noted a few minutes ago. Second, we're going to talk about the open space and community connections, which we feel is the most valuable contribution that this campus is making. In addition to the architecture. The third aspect is to talk about the transportation strategy, which is going to focus on the holistic view of the place of this campus within the entire regional transportation network. And how we can best position the campus to take advantage of those resources while also recognizing that personal transportation is going to continue to be a necessary component of any successful city development. And so how do we deal with that? And finally, we'll talk briefly about sustainability and how we're focusing the design of the buildings, development of the buildings on sustainable design practices using current best building practices as well as the principles that are clearly outlined in the Emeryville Design Guidelines. So those are our four areas discussion and we'll move right into, I think, the next slide if we can. And reiterate the campus plan as we've discussed it previously and as Maru has introduced. And I'll just highlight a few key things on this diagram, which I think has been updated from the one in your package. The open spaces that we've been talking about are illustrated here with the green text and there's a total of six new spaces plus one existing space. And moving from right to left, we have the Stanford Plaza along Stanford Avenue. The new Chiron Plaza, which is the heart of the campus formed by buildings one and two, three. We have Chiron Way, which as I mentioned, is now going to be open to public transport. And is going to be converted from its current service drive function into a pedestrian friendly environment. Pedestrian bicycles, actually. Then we have the Paseo, which is the space between building four and buildings two and three, which will be created, developed into a attractive passageway between those buildings that will interconnect again with the street and Chiron Way. The existing space moving farther to the left of Hollis Green Avenue already existing and will remain. And then moving north, we have the new focus that was created by the configuration of buildings eight A and eight B, which we're referring to as PCR Plaza to celebrate the discoveries that took place on this particular site. And again, we'll talk about that in more detail as we move forward. And then finally, moving up to the building thirteen fourteen site. We've actually pushed back the northern facade of building fourteen and thirteen and shortened the building so that we could actually add that space to the fifty foot wide easement that was previously allocated next to the PDU for access to the Horton Landing Pedestrian Overpass. So we basically doubled the amount of space now available for public access within that zone. So that represents the seven new spaces and the one existing space. And as we move into the building configurations themselves, Maru gave a brief overview of the buildings, so I won't really spend a lot of time on them here, but I'll just mention two things. The building numbering sequence that you see here may seem a little confusing. And it probably is, but these refer to the original block numbers of the PDP as it was developed in nineteen ninety five. And so we've chosen to maintain those building numbers so that we could correlate this with the nineteen ninety five program and plan. So let's move on to the next slide then. And every, as we talked about previously, this campus is languished for more than two decades with minimal improvements, other than the construction of building four, the demolition of building M and the construction of the parking structure, building twelve A. So we're excited about this proposed development and the transformative impact that it's going to have on this area of the city. Taking this from an area that's focused on parking and existing buildings to this dynamic new campus that will attract tenants that's a little talked about in his introduction. I want to emphasize that these are real building designs. They're carefully considered proposals and they're ready to be implemented as the market conditions allow. And so we're hoping that the input that we gain through this discussion, the study session allows us to move on to a final development plan supplemental and hopefully approval of the projects. So here we see buildings one and two, three from the corner of Stanford Hollis Streets. The excuse me, we can see the treatment of Stanford Plaza at the corner of Stanford and Hollis and the ground level pedestrian focus spaces that are oriented to the street. We see the massing of building one, which is articulated to try to break down the scale of the building so that it's not just a single tower, but it seems like these stacked block elements. And the configuration of those has been carefully considered to try to relate to building development. The actual massing of the building for complex carrying it down the facades on Hollis Street. This illustrates the modern glass and metal building expressions. And these are flexible and efficient floor plates that are sized to accommodate the intended tenants, the life science tenants that will occupy these buildings. And the same thing is true for the building two and three facades. Again, it's built off the scale and the relationships with building four. It's a lower scale building so that we step down towards building four so that we're not overwhelming it in terms of the overall building scale. And each of these buildings, I'll point out, actually incorporates an integrated mechanical screen up at the upper level of the building that will hide all of the mechanical equipment both from a ground level view and from adjacent buildings of similar height so that we won't be looking at exposed rooftop equipment. So moving to the next slide. Each of, as we go through this presentation, we'll actually show you, as we've done here, the new building image. And then we'll take you back to the conditions that are existing on that site. And then compare and contrast that to the proposed view. We'll try to move quickly through these. But here you see the existing condition with the fence and hedge elements and the columnar poplars that frame the site right now. And this is from essentially the same viewpoint. We see the proposed new configuration of the buildings with that iconic tower element at the corner of Stanford and Hollis and building four then in the distance at the corner of fifty third and Hollis. Next slide. As we move through the campus, we've talked briefly about buildings eight A and eight B and how they've been introduced now to the development of the campus. And previously, the FTP was focused primarily on the completion of the minimal project, you know, which incorporates build out of the Hollis Street facades. And so thus the reason for focusing on building one and two, but as we talked about the project internally in the team and with the city, we recognize that we need a cohesive vision for the entire campus. We need to carry these concepts and we've been talking about through the entire development so that we provide some flexibility for BMR as they're looking for the ability to lease these buildings that we have building sizes that can compliment any compliment, any kind of tenant demands. And so the areas of each of these buildings vary depending on the capabilities of the site and the constraints of the PDP. So what we're looking at here is the idea of a, again, breaking down the super block, the building that was previously allocated to the site, building A, breaking it down by the inclusion of open space in the center of the campus. And in doing so, we're able to create these highly transparent building forms that focus on that courtyard space. As we mentioned before, we're organized around the idea of celebrating the discovery of the polymer chain reaction process. The PCR process that was discovered here by Carl Kerry V Mullins while he was working for the Cetus Corporation in nineteen eighty five. And Dr. Mullins won the Nobel Prize for that discovery in nineteen ninety three. And so the intent here is to create this plaza which celebrates that that discovery and that development. And this, as you may know, you know, is the kind of a fundamental aspect of molecular biology these days. And is even being used in terms of the testing process for the COVID nineteen disease. So it's a fundamental aspect of our daily lives at this point. So in this new plan, these two separate buildings are created that are organized around that PCR Plaza space, which starts at fifty third street. which starts at 53rd Street and extends deep into the site between the buildings and serves as the focal point. Which you'll recognize here, and as we look in the other images of the building, the exterior faces of the buildings are more solid and they relate more strongly to the configuration of the brick facades on the Building 4 project, whereas the interior is this classy transparent element. It even includes balconies at the fourth floor levels, third and fourth floor levels, depending on the building, where we can overlook the plaza as well. Next slide. So here we see the before and after images from this 53rd Street view. The existing shows the relatively banal Building G that exists. Formerly the truck bay for the, where Westinghouse Electric Company warehouse that was sitting on the site where the open space currently is now. That building's been repurposed many times over the years and now houses some vacant offices and an auditorium space. And so elimination of that will allow us to create this dramatic, you know, new space and PCR Plaza that we've talked about that are indicated in the lower image. Next slide. This is the view of Building 8A and 8B from the corner of 53rd Street and Horton Street. We're standing roughly at the corner of the PDU building, looking back towards the campus. And again, we see here the more solid side elements of the building that, as I mentioned, reflect the exterior skin nature of the existing Chiron Building 4 and the high transparency of the interior portions of the campus as well. Next slide. We see that same view, the existing condition, again, looking at Building G and Building T, which is hidden behind the tree. And Chiron Building 4 off to the right-hand side. And now the new view from that proposed streets gate with this dynamic new building, 8A and 8B occupying that site and really providing some presence for that street corner. One of the things I'll mention here is that we've actually made, have evolved quite dramatically the bicycle network plans. And you probably can't see it in these renderings, but there will be some modifications made to the street facade to incorporate things like the bike box and turning lanes for bicycles. And we'll talk about that in a later slide. Next slide. Finally, the third view of the Building 8A and 8B, taken from the Hollis Green Park, looking back towards the existing Building 4 on the right. And again, see the screen wall elements, the PCR Plaza and a strong relationship to the base of the building at the street level and the transparent core of the building elements. And then as we move to the next slide, we see the juxtaposition of the existing conditions where a couple of trees here actually obscure the view of the open space of Building G in the background. But here we see that same view and what it will look like when Building 8 is completed on this site. And I'll mention, it's not really obvious from these renderings, but the street level facade or the street level configuration of the buildings and the setbacks that exist under the overhangs have been carefully considered to create this pedestrian pathway that actually links from the entry pavilion at Building 4 across the street, under the overhang of Building 8 and into the PCR Plaza. So the street level setbacks have, will recreate this gracious space that actually extends, you know, from building to building and even under overhang elements to provide this continuity and connectivity between those spaces. So you can move, you know, between buildings, you can move down Chiron Way and then, you know, through PCR Plaza very readily and we'll illustrate that, I think, in a future diagram. Next slide. From there, we're going to move into the discussion about the open space and community connections and how the organization of the building and the configuration of those six new open spaces that I talked about previously actually engage the community and engage the people that will be occupying these buildings. And Sarah is going to walk us through that discussion.
Thank you, John, and thank you all for your time this evening. I'll do a sound check as well. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
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 Great.
We're all muted.
Okay, yes. Well, thank you again. From your valuable feedback, we've heard your comments to make the open spaces available to the public as well as tonight to present more about the landscape design and what makes this campus unique and resilient. And so in this section, I'm going to go through our approach to open space and community connections and how we're designing a distinct campus landscape and public realm that will be welcoming to both tenants and to the community. Next slide. Our approach to open spaces to create a well-connected network of parks, plazas, gardens, streets, and walkways that connect to existing networks. The small footprint buildings will be situated in the landscape to frame these plazas and gathering spaces. And gems scattered throughout the landscape, which you can see conceptually in orange, will provide a range of new amenities that are complementary to the current open spaces and amenities along the Emeryville Greenway. These gems will offer moments of excitement, enjoyment, and discovery to tenants in the community alike. Next slide. The open space network will integrate seamlessly into the current urban fabric. It's designed to create new connections, improve streetscapes, and new parks and plazas that will create a porous campus that is transparent, welcoming, and active throughout the day, week, and weekend. The network includes seven distinct open spaces, as John mentioned. Stanford Plaza and Chiron Plaza welcome people into the campus from the north and the Greenway. Chiron Way and the Paseo are key connections through the heart of the campus and will connect to the existing Hollis Green Park. And as John mentioned, Chiron Way is currently gated off in a private service alley but will be transformed into a shared public way. PCR Plaza provides a range of new amenities at the heart of the campus and will honor the historic legacy of this area and the sciences. And Horton Plaza extends the already planned Horton Landing Park, offering pedestrian and bicycle amenities at this critical city juncture. Next slide. Pathways and open spaces are aligned to invite people into the campus from every direction and create clear wayfinding, as well as to make the campus porous and easily traversable and usable. Chiron Way, the new publicly accessible shared way, is optimized to prioritize pedestrians and bicycle safety. The entry garden between Buildings 1 and 2, 3 draws people into the signature Chiron Plaza from Hollis Street. And the Paseo between Buildings 2, 3, and 4 provides access from Hollis Street into the Campus Core. 53rd Street invites people from Hollis and Horton Streets into PCR Plaza. And Horton Street is improved with a generous and comfortable streetscape for access from the north and south to Horton Plaza and Horton Landing Park. In the last study session, we heard your recommendations for increased pedestrian safety measures to have an eight-foot minimum sidewalk and a streetscape plant palette that is resilient, climate-appropriate, drought-tolerant, and bay-friendly. In response to those recommendations, at key intersections, we're proposing improved and raised crosswalks for safe crossings. We're also pleased to provide eight-foot minimum sidewalks throughout the campus. And we've aligned our plant palette with the Emeryville Climate Resilient Plant and Tree Palette, which was one of your direct recommendations in the last study session. Next slide. Our vision for the open spaces is that they will be usable and inviting for both tenants and the community. We understand this is important to the city and the public, which is why we have designed them to offer a range of distinct spaces and experiences for outdoor working, gathering when appropriate, dining, and play. The layout and amenities will allow the open spaces to be welcoming to all, family-friendly, engaging and interactive for all ages and abilities, and will keep them activated year-round. Next slide. The Streetscape Palette will offer a range of experiences and a variety of seating distributed throughout the campus that are flexible for different uses and different size groups. Will be coordinated, durable, and lasting. It will be aligned with the Emeryville Streetscape Design Guidelines and Identity while also promoting the unique campus identity. Will make the open spaces comfortable and inviting for all. It will provide clear wayfinding and it will offer safe places to work and play outdoors. We heard Commissioner interest in providing terrace seating. And at this time, we've included, we've incorporated terrace seating into PCR Plaza. But we're committed to exploring the opportunities for terrace seating and a diversity of seating options in Chiron and Horton Plaza as we get into the course of detailed design. Next slide. So the campus will create six new parks and plazas, including Hollis Green Park, which makes seven open spaces. There will be a total of 3.5 acres of publicly accessible open space on the campus. This is rare in an urban setting and significant improvement from the current offerings. For a scale comparison, Christie Park, just down the road, is approximately 0.8 acres or roughly 35,000 square feet. In the next set of slides, I'll now zoom into the three areas of the campus. First, Chiron Plaza and Stanford Plaza, second PCR Plaza, and third Horton Plaza. Next slide. Stanford Plaza and Chiron Plaza are anchor plazas for Buildings 1 and 2, 3 and will welcome people into the north part of the campus. Located at the prominent corner of Hollis and Stanford Avenues, Stanford Plaza is designed to be iconic and inviting, yet comfortable and will provide a moment of rest at the corner retail destination. Chiron Plaza will be a new destination along the Emeryville Greenway and accessible via the entry garden from Hollis Street and Chiron Way. The Plaza takes advantage of its sun exposure to offer a variety of sunny and shaded seating areas and will include outdoor amenities to provide comfort for year-round use. The garden is planted with plants and mounds of varying heights for comfort, intrigue, and play. Chiron Way will be open to the public as a shared public way. The streetscape design is optimized to prioritize pedestrians and bicycles and to provide minimal vehicular access for drop-offs at Chiron Plaza and servicing to reduce conflicts and promote safety. The paving design will also promote pedestrian safety while also providing clear wayfinding. This will allow Chiron Way to be a prominent promenade through the heart of the campus and a real amenity to pedestrians and bicyclists. Between Buildings 2, 3, and 4 will be a new tree-lined Paseo for easy access into the campus core. Along Hollis Street and Stanford Avenue, a generous sidewalk will be lined with resilient street trees and seating opportunities, as well as potential bike-share docks. And lastly, on 53rd Street, we will add new bicycle improvements for safety along the Bicycle Boulevard, which Ethan will speak to more later. Next slide. And I'll add in the actual package that we submitted prior to the study session. There's more detailed information. We have that in the appendixes as well, if there are questions. As mentioned, Chiron Way, which you can see on the left, is currently gated off, private, and not accessible to the public. It's a service alley and a parking lot, and it's the back of house. The shared public way on Chiron Way will drastically transform Chiron Way into an invigorated pedestrian and bicycle corridor lined with street trees and direct access and direct easy access through and to the campus. Next slide. Currently, on Hollis Street, there's a large parking lot located at the future site of Buildings 1, 2, 3 and Chiron and Stanford Plaza. It's gated off, private, and the back of house as well. The Paseo will energize this area, opening the campus and providing through access to the public. It will be lined with a shade garden, including resilient flowering trees and shade-tolerant plants. Next slide. PCR Plaza completes the missing link at the core of the campus and will be the new anchor open space at Buildings 8A and 8B. It's designed to create a new destination to honor the legacy of the campus and allow people to seamlessly move through the campus. PCR Plaza takes advantage of its unique southern sun exposure and northern shade condition to provide the best of both worlds. On the south, an urban entry plaza fronting 53rd Street that welcomes peoples into the centerpiece of the campus with a variety of sunny seating areas, sculptural planters for views and intrigue, and signature art pieces. Between Buildings 8A and 8B, a shade garden with a terrace seating and dining area is lined by a sculptural and planted focal point that will frame the space and provide respite and tranquil setting that can be enjoyed from both inside and outside of the building. And lastly, 53rd Street will include new bicycle improvements, a generous tree-lined eight-foot sidewalk, a drop-off zone, and bicycle racks and a potential bike-share dock. Next slide. The new PCR Plaza will embody the energy of this new campus as an inviting and active plaza that will be both urban, as you can see in the renderings on the left, and tranquil, as you can see in the precedent images on the right. Next slide. As some of you may know, this campus is a historic site in the sciences. The current PCR Park is named to commemorate the pioneering scientists who made many discoveries on the campus, namely the discovery and development of the Nobel Prize-winning polymerase chain reaction technology, PCR, which is a method used to rapidly make billions of copies of DNA to study it in detail. The research and development done on this campus was also at the foundation in human genome sequencing. And as John mentioned, they are currently working on COVID-19 testing as we speak. As Biomet has previously indicated to the city, they and our team believe this timely pursuit for knowledge should be honored. And Biomet is committed to celebrating this legacy physically in PCR Plaza through the combination of art, sculpture, naming, and information exchange to share the history and exciting opportunities of the R&amp;D campus. And as a unique coincidence, my father actually worked in Building 4 during its Chiron days. So our whole team is connected and committed to the legacy of this site, and we are excited to carry that legacy forward for future generations to experience, be informed, and be inspired. Next slide. Last but not least, Horton Plaza is designed to enhance and extend the planned Horton Landing Park and provide an inviting plaza that is open to the public. Horton Plaza will be directly adjacent to a new retail cafe and bike repair kiosk, which will provide bicycle repair tools, bike racks, and lockers right off of the Horton Bicycle Boulevard. The Plaza will include a range of seating types, turf-and-planted garden, and art pieces and is intended to be a focal point at this critical city juncture. A tree-lined trail connects Horton Plaza to a second, smaller plaza on the south side of Building 1314. And the red arrows are intended here to indicate pedestrian entry into the building and parking garage. On Horton Street, the project will cap and cover the existing culvert at Horton Plaza to create a seamless and generous nine-foot-wide tree-lined sidewalk along Horton Street and aligned bicycle lanes. In addition, new bicycle facilities and improvements will be made along Horton Street, and Ethan will speak to those in more detail. Next slide. Looking from the future South Bay Front Bridge, on the top is a view of the existing parking lot. It's paved, surrounded by chain-link fangs, and it's an eyesore. This will be transformed into the inviting Horton Plaza, where both the new retail space and the park can spill out into the Plaza. It will be directly accessible from Horton Landing Park and a welcoming entry to those coming over the South Bay Front Bridge. Next slide. If you were standing on Horton Street at 53rd Street, looking south, you would see the top view, which is a gated-off parking lot and storage area. This will be transformed into a well-lit, accessible Plaza that's inviting during the day and evening, as well as the weekend. As you can see here, it directly connects to the adjacent Horton Landing Plaza to provide direct access to these new amenities for tenants in the public. Next slide. And now I will turn it over to Ethan to talk about the transportation strategy. Thank you.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, I hear you fine.
Great. I'm going to try to control the slides and give the presentation at the same time, so bear with me. So I'm going to walk you guys through the next few slides to cover our transportation strategy. And the transportation strategy that we're presenting tonight incorporates specific feedback that we've heard during the various meetings we've had with you all, as well as with BPAC and also Bike East Bay. So our transportation strategy is comprised of four primary elements that together work to ensure that we're able to provide access to and from the site by way of the different modes of transportation available within Emeryville and also that connect Emeryville to the broader region. The components I'll be covering include public transit and relatedly first-mile-last-mile solutions, bicycles, and autos. So the map here that sits on your screen shows the project in relation to the public transit options available to the campus, which we hope to encourage the use of. The project site includes easy access to Emery Go-Round, a handful of AC transit public bus routes, and is in relatively short walking distance to and from the Emeryville Amtrak Station. As you can see indicated on the top of the map, the project site is approximately two miles from the Ashby Bart Station and 1.6 miles from the MacArthur Bart Station, or approximately a half an hour walk. Because we anticipate that Bart will be the most popular of the regional public transit options, given the distance of these stations from the project site, we understand it's also critical that we provide reliable first-mile-last-mile options in addition to Emery Go-Round in order for Bart to be a viable commuting option for future employees. With that in mind, With that in mind, we're proposing to include the following elements at the project site. High-capacity bike-share docking stations indicated with the magenta circle that you see on the site plan. Multiple scooter charging stations and designated scooter parking areas indicated by the orange circle on the site plan on your screen. And long-term secure indoor bicycle parking for those employees wanting to use their own bikes to get to the campus, indicated by the hollow green circle on the site plan on your screen. So the project addresses bicycle access in two primary ways. One is onsite bicycle-related amenities, and the second is by enhancing the bicycle network, existing bicycle networks through new paths of travel and upgraded on-street facilities. Together, these components are meant to encourage bicycle commuting to the site and to ensure safe bicycle access and passage by and through the site. One quick note is that you can see on this slide, and as we've mentioned previously, we are proposing to open up Chiron Way as a shared way through the site, including for bicycles. So to cover the bicycle amenities that I mentioned, we are proposing at the site short-term outdoor bicycle parking available to visitors and the public, which is indicated by the solid green dot that you see on the site plan. Enclosed, secure, long-term bicycle parking in each new building available to project tenants, indicated by the hollow green circle that you see on the site plan. A bicycle repair kiosk located within the new Horton Plaza, available for use by tenants and the public, which you can see at the top of the site plan by a solid blue circle. And as previously mentioned, but not actually shown on this slide, bike-share docking stations. So with the understanding that both Horton Street and 53rd Street have been designated by Emeryville as bicycle boulevards, we're proposing to make upgrades to the portion of those streets that run through our project that encourage their continued use by cyclists. With that in mind, we've looked at the city's pedestrian and bicycle plan for guidance on appropriate treatments for bicycle boulevards and are incorporating those into the project. On Horton Street between 53rd Street and the southern end of the project site, which is shown on our screen here, we're proposing the following. To upgrade the shared bike-and-auto condition with a separated bicycle lane and buffer strip, you can see down at the bottom here that we're exploring a number of different options in terms of the specific infrastructure to provide that buffer strip, which will coordinate with the city. We're proposing to paint the pavement and add raised concrete at the garage's two-vehicle entry and exit points to indicate a conflict zone between vehicles and cyclists and to calm traffic at those points. To provide forward bike-stop bars and bike boxes at the northbound intersection with 53rd Street. To add speed bumps as a traffic calming measure. To replace the existing culvert condition with a consistent street section that allows for separated bike lanes on southbound Horton, south of 53rd Street. To provide a traffic signal at 53rd and Horton with pedestrian scramble. And to create table crosswalks at 53rd and Horton. And lastly, to add new signage and wayfinding consistent with city guidance. Additionally, the parking garage has been designed with the following features to enhance bicycle safety. Substantial distance between the two parking garage vehicle entrances to increase sightlines for cyclists. Pullback access gating to ensure all queuing occurs within the garage and does not create a conflict with the bicycle lane. Audiovisual signals to indicate exiting vehicle traffic. And signage for increased vehicle awareness of cyclists. We're proposing many of the same interventions for the length of 53rd Street, which you should now see on your screen here. Speed bumps, so just to cover the items that we're proposing for 53rd Street, speed bumps, and also willingness to lower vehicle speed limits if desired by the city. Forward bicycle stop bars and bike boxes at westbound 53rd at Horton and eastbound 53rd at Hollis to allow for cyclists to safely turn left. Raised crosswalks and a new crosswalk connection at Chiron Way. And new signage and wayfinding. You'll see that we are still proposing sharrows on this portion of the project. We did hear comments in BPAC and from Bike East Bay that they'd like to see separated bike lanes over sharrows, but regretfully, the sections that we, the dimensions of the section that are available along 53rd do not allow for a separated condition. And lastly, the final component of the transportation plan that I'd like to touch on includes vehicles, both private and ride-share. So in order to support commuting by ride-share, we are proposing, as you can see on this map, a number of designated ride-share drop-off sites throughout the project site. So our current proposal includes structured parking for 1,991 cars, as was indicated in everyone's presentation, which serves four new buildings, including in this FDP, as well as the existing Building Four, and will also replace the existing surface parking lot currently serving Building Four. This represents a ratio of 1.63 cars per 1,000 square feet of lab and office space that we're proposing. We've had a number of discussions with planning commissioners, both one-on-one and in previous study sessions, without a desire to see lower parking ratios at the site. This slide is meant to show you that we've received the message. Not only is the 1.63 per 1,000 square foot ratio lower than what is included in the approved PDP, it is also significantly lower than the parking ratio maximum provided in the current Emeryville municipal code. Additionally, as you can see on this map, in other jurisdictions, some of which have very similar transit options as Emeryville, parking ratios are significantly higher than what we are proposing at our project site. This last slide that I'm going to cover shows in different metrics our parking proposal. So our current proposal provides 0.67 spaces per person, which suggests that one of three employees will arrive by some other means in their personal vehicle. Additionally, and as Solil mentioned in his opening statement, we wanted to note that we have signed a lease for Zimergen that guarantees them two spaces per 1,000 square feet, which means that future leases will be limited to one and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet. Thanks for listening, and I'm going to hand it back to John right now.
Thank you, Ethan. I'll just do a sound check again to make sure that everybody can still hear me.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. So Ethan talked about how this campus is being positioned to integrate with the regional transportation network and how we can take advantage of those resources. And as we've noted previously, we also want to carefully consider how to accommodate the personal transportation aspect of this. It's going to be a necessary portion of this. And as we mentioned, that is currently planned to go into the Building 1314 site, as shown here in the upper left-hand corner. Next slide. I want to start here by briefly talking about the various parking strategies that can be utilized in an urban environment. And I want to remind everyone, 1995 PDP envisioned that all of the parking would be located west of Horton Street, so the car access was consolidated on Horton, and the campus was essentially free to accommodate only buildings. And the first phase of that plan was actually implemented with the construction of Building 12A, which is now owned by Griffles and is not a part of this current project. The advantage of this approach is that without the need to integrate the parking into the buildings, the building is allowed to have an active streetscape that beats the street in a pedestrian-friendly way. When parking is a necessary component of the building itself, and the building, the parking, and the street facades are all compromised by the need to accommodate that parking, access becomes more difficult, and most importantly, that pedestrian passageway in ground-level open spaces that we've advocated for and have incorporated into the current planning of the campus is eliminated, dramatically changing that street-level relationship and the pedestrian access and open space capabilities that we felt was such a key aspect of the new principles that were the focus of our campus design. In this particular case, the open space would then have to be pushed up to the top of the parking levels, no longer accessible to the general public, and replacing, replicating the conditions of the original PDP design that we were trying to move away from. So we're strong advocates for the consolidation of the parking, as has been proposed in the current plans. Next slide. Here we see the image of Building 1314 as it was presented at study session number two. And we had heard two key things from the planning commission. One was the need for greater integration and respect for the Sherwin-Williams project and the occupants of that building and what they'll be viewing. And the second was the suggestion that we explore alternate color and materials. We've taken both of those to heart and have studied this very vigorously. Next slide. The most significant change has come in the configuration of the garage itself and the relationship of that particular building to the adjacent parcel. The Sherwin-Williams buildings are located as close as four feet to the property line, which creates this very, very condensed space. And the original proposal, as you see on the left-hand side, showed 27 feet between the building face and the parking structure. As we've re-studied the parking structure and have reduced the parking counts, we've been able to eliminate a 10-foot strip of parking along the western edge of the building, thereby increasing that distance at the lower levels to 37 feet. And here you see that the lower two levels of the existing or the proposed Sherwin-Williams project are actually parking as well. And so we're only dealing with a limited number of apartment floors. The second key thing that we've done here is in the reduction of the parking counts and reevaluation of how to accommodate the parking most efficiently, we've actually shifted the location of the parking spaces to step back the building facade here, and we've achieved from levels five and up, we've achieved an 81-foot setback, which, as you can see here, allows much, much deeper penetration of the kind of eastern morning light into that space where the space between the parking garage and the Sherwin-Williams property, that 81 feet, as you can see in the image up above, is roughly equal to the current space on Hollis Street between the face of Building Four and the face of Building O. So just to give a sense of scale of the degree of setback that we've been able to achieve here. Next slide. So the other key component that is the result of the conversations that we've been having is the incorporation of a living wall at the lower elements. So for that 37-foot distance, which, as I mentioned, is only impacting three floors of apartment buildings, we've actually incorporated this living wall element at that lower level of parking structure so that the occupants of that building will be looking out not at cars, but at the green facades of the building. And here we see precedent images. The upper right-hand corner is a wall that exists on Mission Street in San Francisco, quite successful. And we're implementing technology from various locations around the country and the world that will allow us to create this wall system that can be maintained and can be successful in terms of the growth of the plants over a long period of time. And Sarah actually is going to get into more detail about the specifics of the space and the studies that we've done.
Thanks, John. I just want to add on this slide that Bionics Design Director Marcel Wilson actually designed the living wall precedent at 555 Mission Street in San Francisco, which is in the upper right-hand corner, and our office Bionic has experience with this type of condition and construction type. Next slide. So the living wall is a combination of five elements: cables, vines, perennials, trees, and active irrigation. These elements were selected to maximize screening, create variety, and provide an attractive screen starting day one while plants grow into their full potential. Planters and trees are strategically located to screen the edges and the top of the parking deck, to balance the weight load on the structure, and to align flowering trees and lush planters with adjacent units. In combination with the at-grade columnar trees and raised planters, this facade will be a vibrant, three-dimensional garden and an art piece. Next slide. We heard some questions regarding the plant palette for the living wall and the appropriate species for the context and environment. To address this, we studied the sun exposure in great detail for all times of day and throughout the year. The exposure varies from two hours per day in the middle, lower levels shown in green here, all the way to 12 hours per day on the north or left side of the facade shown in yellow. This informed the selection of a resilient grouping of lush and flowering vines, perennials, and trees. Once established, these species require low water and low maintenance, and they can be maintained and accessed from the parking levels just on the other side. The trees are multi-stem, flowering, and have a small but dense canopy for maximized screening, and will create habitat opportunities for pollinator species. The vines are flowering, expansive, hardy growers, and will fill out the facade where planted. The perennials are lush with attractive and dense foliage, and the color palette of plants will accent the green and yellow cable color selection. To work with the sun exposure, the plants will be distributed across the vertical canvas and ultimately create an elegant mosaic of greens, yellows, whites, and purples year round. Next slide. And I'll hand it back to John to describe in more detail.
Thank you, Sarah. So here we see the view from approximately the seventh floor of the Sherwin-Williams complex looking north in the space between the buildings, and we can see the sunlight penetration comes through the space. For this rendering, actually, the sun angle is from the east slightly afternoon and shows the deep penetration of sunlight into the space between the buildings. We see an illustration of how the planting materials will cling to the facade of the buildings at those lower levels. And the little inset in the center of the picture at the right side indicates how we will treat the screening of the parking garage elements at that particular level, at the upper level, where the extension of the living wall will actually extend to six feet above the parking level so that we block direct view and we block any headlights conditions from shining directly into the adjacent apartment sides. Next slide. So while we've completely rethought the building configuration as a part of this exercise, we've maintained the aesthetic vision for the garages we illustrated in study session number two while reconsidering the material choices and the color choices that were made. The key building elements are the feature stairways at the corner of the buildings, two feature stairways at each corner, and then one in the center of the building, which create this iconic tower expression. We've reconsidered the color, which previously was the international orange, similar to the colors of the Golden Gate Bridge, and we've moved to a different material, a brass-type material, that will have this more golden brown color, as you see here in the renderings. The skin material for the rest of the structure will be solid panels at the opaque areas, such as the elevator towers, that are actually integrated with the stairways themselves. And then the remainder of the building will be screened by a perforated metal panel elements that will screen the cars during the day, and it will glow with a soft color at night when the garage is occupied, with the lights that automatically extinguish when not occupied so that the garage lights don't disturb the adjacent apartment dwellers. We also see here the cafe at the base of the building that Sarah had talked about previously and the relationship to the Horton Plaza and the Horton Landing spaces, where that cafe is a perfect spot for somebody who's coming to work to stop, grab a cup of coffee in the morning, and then move across the street to their location within one of the new office buildings or research buildings. Next slide. So as before, we're showing here the juxtaposition of the existing conditions versus the proposed conditions. We see the parking lot and the chain-link fence and the construction materials that Sarah had mentioned previously that is currently occupying this site versus the proposed new configuration with this iconic building along Horton Street that, instead of becoming just a parking garage, will actually become a feature element. We've also incorporated on the right-hand side an image of the original PDP concept for this particular site with multiple levels of parking topped by two tower elements for offices. The parking count was roughly the same as The parking count was roughly the same as it is posed right now. And then the two tower elements, which rose to more than 150 feet on this site. And so the scale of the building actually is much reduced from what was envisioned as a part of the original PDP. Next slide. Final discussion element we want to talk about here briefly is the sustainability aspects that are envisioned for this project. Jump ahead one slide. So the consistent goals for the buildings on the campus is to create buildings that are socially responsible and that meet or exceed the specific objectives within the Emeryville Design Guidelines and the general plan. The areas of focus are highlighted on the left-hand side of the image, talking about the building energy usage, air and water components, and then landscape infrastructure, all as key areas of focus that will be studied as we continue development of the building. On the right-hand side, we've highlighted 10 specific areas that are being considered as a part of the project. And each of them, if you read the text, which I can't do at this scale, but each of them are linked in the text to the specific sections of the design guidelines where the Emeryville requirements are described. And I won't go into all of the items here, but they do cover all of the specific elements that we talked about previously, the concept of the exterior skin, the ability to incorporate daylighting into the project design to minimize electrical use, the idea of ventilation to enhance the air quality within the building, the energy conservation features that are incorporated into the screen wall system with high-performance glazing that rejects heat and provides a higher insulating value than has been able to be achieved in the past. The ideas of water conservation through the use of energy conservation fixtures through the landscaping treatments and the biofiltration and water treatment that will be implemented on the, on the site design itself, as Sarah had talked about previously. So all of those will become key components as we move through the design process to achieve this highly sustainable building solution. Next slide. So we've come full circle back to one of the original slides that Solila talked about in the introduction of the project, which illustrates the components of the campus, of the BMR campus within the Emeryville and the network. And I want to say that we're very excited about the new direction for this campus, about the incorporation of buildings 8A and 8B. And we truly appreciate all the constructive input that we've received over the course of this design and development. We feel that this plan represents a real transformation of this particular area. Next slide. And we feel that these proposed buildings, 1, 2, 1, building 1, building 2 and 3, buildings 8A and 8B, and this network of open spaces that tie this all together will be a real contribution to the city of Emeryville. With that, we're happy to address any questions you may have and are looking forward to any input that you'd like to provide to us.
Hey, thank you very much. We get our commissioners back here. At this time, this is when commissioners are here to ask questions of the applicant. Are there questions at this time? And let me call on folks. Let me start with Commissioner Keller.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. And the first one could start with Sarah. There were some issues not too far along when you, when PG&E had some issues wanting to tear up some trees along 53rd Street. So in your design for the PCR Plaza, have you guys been in contact with PG&E to find out what they're going to want you to do in terms of tree planting in that area? And if the trees that are there have to be removed, are they saleable to where they can be reused, or have you looked at that?
Solila and Ethan, I don't know if you've been in contact with PG&E yet. And when I just address that, and then I can speak to the trees themselves.
I can answer that. I don't want to speak with you, Ethan. Do you want to go?
I'll go ahead.
The, yeah, so we have initiated the conversation with PG&E for a block-wide, this is solid, probably biometric for a block-wide utility infrastructure assessment about what's there, what needs to be upgraded, what the capacities are, et cetera. So that's a global discussion that usually takes about a year of coordination, you know, every time we've done this with PG&E, it at least takes a year. And going back to us adding the last piece of, you know, it puts everything together, allowing us to do that whole utility master plan as one integrator. That, this is one thing that doesn't work piecemeal, one street at a time. We've got to look at it as a block. Some of those lines probably know are decades old. So rest assured, we've just about initiated the next state of our design process while we, you know, process the approvals of the entitlements. We've gone ahead and initiated the detailed design process for our utility master plan and infrastructure for the entire block. So coming out of that process, to answer your question, we expect to flush out any and all issues, you know, related to PG&E and under running infrastructure, gas, electric, transformers, vaults, et cetera.
And then how that relates to the trees, the plant seeds, and et cetera. Okay. And then I think I'll have one more question that would probably be for John and I'm both. It's possible to go back to your slide deck, and I think page 11 would show specifically looking at the building along Stanford Avenue, the North facade. And I understand, that picture here could actually work 59, if we look at the building in the upper right corner, looking at the kind of the northeast corner of the building. In another rendering, you guys show a little bit more finestration in that ground level. I know there's some mechanical rooms on this north side, but it seems like the northeast corner could use some finestration. And I think you guys showed in one drawing that there would be some. The, what I'm concerned with is this, if this whole north side has all this slapwork in it, it kind of blocks off the connection of the building to the street, particularly to this iconic plaza, as you call it, the Stanford Plaza. So I was wondering if you guys are looking at opening up that, at least that northeast corner of the building, so it's not so solid. Does my question make sense?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Keller. We appreciate your, your question and comment. And it's actually very astute. For the purposes of the presentation, we chose to reuse an older rendering of building one. And that corner actually has evolved quite dramatically. Originally, you may recall that we were actually proposing service spaces along the Stanford facade, and we've relocated those around the corner to be accessed off of Chiron Way, which has freed us up to, you know, to create a strong kind of retail public-facing element at the corner of Stanford and Hollis. And, you know, more transparency along the base of the building facing Stanford Street. So the next iteration of renderings actually will show what you're asking for, which is, you know, much more responsive facade, much more active facade along that Stanford Street frontage and even around the corner along Hollis Street.
Very good. Thanks. And then one last question before Ethan. And it's a question that will kind of inform my comments later on, but the signal at Horton and 53rd, is that driven by a request from the city? Is there someone requiring that, or is it just a recommendation that you guys think is a good idea to put a signal in that intersection?
Yeah, that's a recommendation that we're making. We think that because of, you know, the flow of pedestrians, you know, across the campus over to building 13 and 14, and also the new city park that, you know, connects Bay Street over with this, this side of the city. With all that influx of pedestrians, we think that that's the safest condition to move folks across that intersection. And we think that it's also, you know, the, as far as I'm aware, the Emeryville bike and pedestrian guidelines do say that at major intersections where they cross Bicycle boulevards, those types of like sort of, you know, major traffic calming measures like signals are appropriate. So that's why we're applying it.
Chair Thompson, can I, may I address that also?
Yes, can you?
Thank you. The applicant has prepared some traffic studies, including the need for the signal there, as well as a lot of other issues. And those have been submitted to the city. We are going to have those studies peer-reviewed by our traffic consultant. And after that review has occurred, we'll then make a determination about the need for that signal and all of the other measures that they're proposing.
Very good. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Guerrero, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Let's see. Questions regarding the, I had a similar question about the scramble recommendation at 53rd. And I was curious, maybe Ethan, this is a question for you. What the feedback was from the bicycle, the East Bay, Bike East Bay? What was their recommendation for that intersection?
Awesome. From the biker's perspective, from both B-PAC and Bike East Bay, there was, there was certainly encouragement to keep a stop sign instead of a signal. You know, so we did, you know, based on, again, the feedback from our traffic engineer and also, you know, feeling of pedestrian safety importance also, we thought we'd make the recommendation.
Got it. And then in terms of the, the bicycle treatment that you're, that you're proposing here on Horton, can you clarify whether that would be class four or what class are you recommending at this point?
Horton, we're recommending class four, fully separated bike lanes with two foot buffers.
Thank you. Can you, can you speak to whether there are any shower facilities within the long-term parking in the buildings outside of the parking structure?
Yeah, I can take that. Or John. Yes, the answer is yes.
Go ahead, Solil.
Yes.
Thank you, Solil. Simple, simple answer. That's great. Those are all my questions for now. The rest of my notes are all feedback.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero. Commissioner Young, Vice Chair Young, rather.
Hello. Thank you very much. Questions generally, in the terms of building, what is that? That would be building 8A. Um, that PCR Plaza, I mean, has there been, I really like the idea of the balconies going in there, but my question is, are these balconies access, could be ever accessible by people to be able to kind of be able to go up and visit those balcony spaces, or at least to have a vantage point from those spots? Second video would be the second thing, here we go. And the second thing would be that in terms of the parking garage area on the back, do you, do you feel that, and I'm just, I just, it's a kind of a hypothetical question, can you kind of explain like how the, you know, you kind of make it closer on the persons on the lower floors versus the persons on the higher floors? There, there's such, there, there seems to be such a contrast on how those floors are treated, what kind of views they're getting. Persons on the lower floor gets all this pretty green, persons on the upper floor gets, gets all this flat glass or flat metal panels. And I think you could go to, yes. So can, I mean, I just, just seems like it'd be nice to, if, if you're going to have to go this direction, I mean, it behooves me to believe that you want to think about possibly bringing more living greenery on those upper floors as well, at least as a form of an accent. Has that been something that's been thought about? Maybe to kind of carry it off a little bit. Possibly that's a missed opportunity. You can answer both of those together. Thank you.
I can take both. And then I'll also look to the team to help me here. On the first one, the people accessing the balcony, you know, the members of the general public, the community accessing the balconies, usually these lab office buildings involve, you know, secure lab code, check-in, check-out, downing, there's a long procedure to get through. And, and so it doesn't lend itself as a practical matter to go through, you know, a sort of a secure lab environment eventually to get upstairs. But the underlying, the seed of the idea, the underlying principle here is, and that's probably what you're going for is, you know, what resources are we offering? What are we providing to the community? What is the community getting out of this? Right? And so we've answered that question. We've taken a long, deliberate look at what can we do in a meaningful way, not just, you know, throwaway gestures, but real, meaningful, usable, accessible community of resources throughout the campus. And the answer to that question, you know, is, is reflected in our current site plan. All of the open areas, the, the pocket parks, the pedestrianized streets, et cetera, are all resources that we're going to develop with features that the community would enjoy. And so rather than, you know, getting them up through a lab building upstairs, you know, through a secure environment, we thought one way to solve it would be to provide a lot of resources, but in an accessible manner. Let me pause there and maybe look to our design team to add some more color.
Yes, Solil, I think you've done a good job of explaining the terrace is obviously accessible to the building occupants at that level. But to, you know, to, to take the public through, you know, what is a highly sensitive area, secure, you know, needs trained lab personnel with appropriate downing and provisions, you know, just isn't practical. So the focus has been, as Solil mentioned, on creating that experience for people at the ground level where it was readily accessible and engaging and limit the upper level access to the building occupants themselves who are, you know, card access to the building and trained appropriately.
The second question, we're happy to look into that. I think it's a fair idea. It's a, it's a good observation, you know, we can see very clearly in this rendering. The, let's take that away as a, as a, as a, as a challenge. Yeah, we'll definitely look into it.
Vice Chair Young, do you have additional questions, or is that it?
That's good for now.
Okay, great. Thanks. Commissioner Sahani?
Thank you. So one of my questions has already been asked, so I'll just make a comment there, which is at the intersection of Horton and 53rd, the, currently, I think the design team is suggesting signal and pedestrian scramble. I would definitely encourage you to explore that more because I think there are certain, you know, like thresholds which need to be warranted in order to-
Commissioner Sahani, we're still in the, the phase where we do commissioner questions. We haven't done the public comment period yet.
Okay. Uh, okay, so the question out here is, in one of your slides, you were showing bike stations for micro-mobility vehicles such as baby. So have you had any conversations with, with these agencies? And what was the rationale behind showing four stations which were very close to each other? Is, is there some calculation or any conversation that led you to that, that solution?
We have, we have not reached out to any specific provider of any of these services yet. I think, you know, it's a little premature for us to do so, but the, the only thing behind the Ford Go-Bike stations was it was, you know, probably the most compelling image that the design team grabbed off of image search, you know. But, you know, we'll explore all options, you know, and, you know, take feedback from, from this group and from the city in terms of what makes the most sense in terms of which provider specifically that we want to reach out to include the site.
And I would, we just, in the site plans, the intent was to show potential locations. So we've studied dimensionally where these might fit. But we understand as we develop it more to identify which are the, the most opportune locations.
Got it. Okay. And then my second question was in one of your slides that showed parking garage, I noticed there were two crosswalks that were located very close to each other, just to the south of parking garage. Is, are those crosswalks? Is, are, are those crosswalks that you are suggesting as part of the design? Is one of them old? The other one is new? Is, is there a way that two could be consolidated?
I can, I can answer that. It's a very astute question again. One of the parking, or one of the crosswalks is actually a part of the original PDP and the second is actually a part of the Shore Williams development. And yes, I think our objective would be to consolidate those if possible. So when you only have one at that location. So it's really just a matter of determining, you know, which side of the property line it will go on.
Okay, got it. Yeah, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sahani. Commissioner Chapey?
Thank you, Chair Thompson. One question about the ratios that you showed for traffic and thanks for the presentation. When you've done studies looking at the need for parking, have you taken into account the availability of parking in Emeryville that's outside of the project?
I'm muting myself. Thank you. Yes, we the, so for example, you know, our neighbor right there, Grifols, you know, they have an existing garage. And, and we've been in conversations with them over the past year. Day one, since we acquired the campus, you know, to see if there was that spoken for, they're reserving that for their own use. And the best we could, you know, get from them was very short term, like, you know, with month-to-month extensions on a small fraction. It was a drop in the bucket of, you know, what, so you see the big garage and that's spoken for, we can't force them to give it to us. But yes, we've definitely looked to that. Yeah.
And does that, has that changed your calculations at all about the number of spaces that would be needed?
The, their solution, short term, with a two to three year horizon helps us during course of construction at best. But when we, and, and so what we, so the business we're in, you know, we, we write 10 or 15-year leases with major companies. And so we've got to make forward guaranteed commitments, you know, to, to deliver spaces on a 10 or 15-year horizon. And so a month-to-month extension that, you know, runs only three years is not, you know, it's literally not feasible for us to take that to our tenants. Because the obvious question is, okay, what happens after a year? But yes, we, we definitely, we would love to, right? We'd love to do something there. And we've tried really hard, but at, at the end of the day, you know, private entity, private entity, there's only so much we can do. We can't force that outcome.
Okay. Yeah. And just one more question on that too, just to make sure I understand correctly. So, and with the parking ratios. So are there any guidelines or regulations that are leading you to fulfill a certain ratio at this point? Or it's purely based on the perceived demand from the tenants that you would be signing leases with?
Yeah, it's a good question. The, our source of information is our customer. You know, as an example, when we were engaged with Zimmer Gen, you know, as they, very early on last year. And this was before we started any of the approval process. So, so what they, they know where their employees actually live. They've got internal documents, very often confidential, because they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily able to disclose like locations and zip codes. But they know exactly how people are coming. They know their need. And so, you know, it becomes a very simple sort of gating question when we're trying to sign the lease, which is, here's what we need. Are you able to provide? And so coming out of that kind of discussion is where we got to two per thousand with, with Zimmer Gen. And, and then that happens, you know, lease after lease, everything. Over time, these averages get established in every submarket. And so our source of feedback isn't, you know, isn't a sort of theoretical, you know, we, we would lower it if we, I think I've said this to the other commissioners in an earlier presentation, is we actually lose money pouring that concrete for the garage. We don't make any money. We don't charge for it. It's a requirement in order to incentivize and induce tenants to plant a flag and grow their business in town, right? And so in, 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 it's interesting, our incentives are aligned here, you know, we, we would love to do even less, but then we wouldn't be able to lease. Said another way, repeating myself, but we don't make money building garages, right? And so this is the bare minimum to be able to successfully attract the kinds of blue chip companies we're looking. Sorry for some of the, the other commissioners. I described this before. Apologize for the redundancy, but it's, it's a good question and we've definitely thought through that. Our feedback is our customer.
Great. Thanks for indulging me. First time hearing it. One question on Chiron Way, and apologies if I missed this too, but what's the current proposed access there? Is it, is it open to vehicles, pedestrians and bicycles? Or has that changed at all?
It will still be open to, to all three, to pedestrians, bicycles and vehicles. But the intent is that the vehicular traffic will really be minimized just to drop offs at Chiron Plaza and then to the servicing.
Great. Okay. And then I think the, just two more questions. One, the culvert that would be under, I think it's Horton Park, right? Coming out of 53rd roughly, has there been any exploration of daylighting that rather than covering it? Would there be any reason to do that?
John, do you want to try, I mean, it's a fairly detailed technique.
I can talk to that a little bit. I can just say that, well, that culvert is the former alignment of Temeska Creek. But Temeska Creek years ago was rerouted by the Alameda County Fire Control District into a giant pipe that now goes under 53rd Street and then comes down and then swings across and goes under the railroad track. So that culvert currently only functions as a storm drain, this is my understanding, for the adjacent properties, maybe for two or three blocks at the, at the most. It's not a real creek. And if you were to open it up, there wouldn't be anything other than just a little bit of storm drainage coming through there. But we definitely explored that option long before Biomed was on the scene, when we were designing Horton Landing Park. And came to the conclusion that it wasn't worth trying to do anything to daylight that storm drain.
Great. Okay, very clear. And then my last question is, has there been a discussion yet of what the roofs might look like? So I think I saw something about cool roof design, but has there been any discussion about green roofs or solar, you know, capability? And I guess where I'm going with that is have, have you thought about designing the roof structure to maximize solar potential?
Yeah, very good question. And I'll tackle this and anybody else on the design team can weigh in. So in these lab buildings, there's a high demand for roof space because of the equipment that's needed to support the building. And as the building gets taller, that demand gets more acute. We need, you know, air handling units to provide fresh air. We need exhaust fans. We need the mechanical equipment, the boilers, chillers, all those components. And so generally speaking, they tend to fully occupy the roof areas of the building. And so the idea of doing, well, we back up and address a different part of your question. So any roof area will be treated as a cool roof. So where we actually have roofing material, which will be, you know, under some of this equipment and, and all the walkways and open areas. That will be, you know, a white reflective material so that we maintain that kind of cool roof philosophy. The idea of doing a green roof really isn't practical on any areas that are up at the upper levels of the building, although potentially those terrace areas that we mentioned that are overlooking PCR Park, you know, those may be a candidate for a partial areas of green roof in addition to the seating areas that we want to incorporate up there. With respect to solar, the, you know, best and most productive area for solar will be the parking garage itself. And so the plan will be to, you know, incorporate the capability of adding solar to the roof of the parking garage at all levels. We've studied in the past, the idea of adding solar above the equipment on the upper roof levels. That has never proven to be practical because, because of the, you know, cooling tower exhausts, the air intake intakes for the air handling units, for all the other stuff that's up there. It just basically creates such a fragmented condition that it hasn't proven to be practical. We've studied this with BMR on a number of other projects and as I said, just hasn't proven to be a practical installation.
I can add one layer, sort of additional color over there. The, our rooftops end up being, you know, Swiss watches, right? Especially these urban, you know, settings like the one, the campus we're proposing over here. And so every inch of ground coverage, we could set up large mechanical yards at the ground plane in order to free up roof areas to play, you know, to, to put some tricks up there. But then that takes away from a different resource, which we think is much more valid, right? The open space, parks, the seats, the, the amphitheaters, et cetera. And so in that trade-off, we think the better balance is to, you know, set up the equipment on the roof. We don't have the benefit of like, you know, the, the rolling, you know, the rolling, like, I've said this before, the rolling hills of New Jersey, you know, you've got like plains of long, you know, suburban campus type settings. We just don't have that ground. We've got a much more dense campus. And so every surgical intervention of the ground plane, we'd set aside as a open space that everyone can enjoy. And then we've taken the mechanical equipment and instead of putting it on, you know, in, on pads, generator yards, et cetera, at the ground plane. You know, the roofs end up being sort of this dense Swiss watch of mechanical.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're done, Commissioner Chapey? Fantastic, thank you. Yeah, thanks a lot. In terms of questions that I have, most of my questions have been answered. Thank you for the clarity around Temeska Creek and the culvert. The one thing that I didn't hear presented was any conversation around the bird safe guidelines. It's been something that we'd recently instituted in Emeryville and you do have a lot of glass. So, so what's your thinking on that?
Yeah, that also is a good question or good comment. I mentioned it briefly somewhere in the discussion, but we didn't really address it in very much detail. So we're very familiar with the bird safe guidelines and, you know, what it takes to accomplish that. Especially with these, you know, taller glassy buildings. And the incorporation of, you know, patterning on the glass, anti-reflective coatings. You know, other things are definitely a part of the consideration that we're going to look into as we develop the details of the exterior wall system. So it's something that, you know, is, is certainly consistent with the thinking of BMR and, and the project. And it will also help with the energy efficiency of the building as well. If we can incorporate a fruit pattern or other elements as a part of the facade, you know, that has benefits in multiple areas. So definitely a part of the considerations as we work on the final development of the, the building skin, glass selection and, and material treatments.
Okay, thank you.
I did just add that we're, we're hyper aware of the placement of trees in relation to the buildings and very closely studying the, the location of those and the spacing to, to promote the bird safety as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great. So now this is a study session. So this is, oh, sorry, Commissioner Guerrero?
All right, I have a couple more questions.
Sure.
Is, is it okay to ask right now?
Go ahead.
I have a question about the parking structure and how, like, you all plan on utilizing that space during off-peak hours or weekends when tenants won't be using that space?
Yes, you know, it, it, the, the demand there fluctuates, you know, that correspond to work hours. So we can, we're, we can look into creative ideas.
So at this point, there hasn't been any thought about how to, like, what the parking garage will be utilized for during the weekend, is what you're saying?
If, right. So if there's an alternate higher and better use for when the, the garage is, let's just say Sunday morning, or let's just say during the day Sunday, that's what you're going for, right? We haven't had the, you know, who, let's look into it. Absolutely. It's a good idea. Let's look into it.
My question relates more to like, whether public access has been a conversation and part of that discussion. Because I'd imagine that people that are visiting Bay Street might want to use that. And so I'm, I'm wondering how far that discussion has been for, for you all internally?
We can totally look into it.
Okay. And my second question is about a, a potential partnership I see here. I mean, there, there's, there are hundreds of housing units next door that are being built pretty close in time here. And I'm thinking about whether there's been any discussion with Lennar based on a letter that we received from them and, and ways that would incentivize employees and from your tenants to actually live in those, those buildings. And, and if that hasn't been part of any discussions, whether that's an opportunity that could be explored?
Our discussions with Lennar, you know, are along those lines about how, you know, we can actually implement the live, work, play, catch phrase that we hear all over the Bay Area. You know, where two legs of that stool, where, you know, can we execute together, right? You know, we're committed, we're ready, this is real, we're ready to, so the, the work piece of that phrase, we're there and we're ready to do this. And the live piece of it, you know, I know that Lennar is actually building right now. And so there's, there's a lot of synergy there to your point. We agree.
Okay. So it sounds like there's some potential there and, and the conversation is, is happening.
It's active, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Commissioner, or Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero. Okay, I'm going to move us on to the, to the public comment portion of this. And then I think the question is, do we have folks who are interested in commenting? And I do also have a script here. So I'm going to launch into this. Now is the time for public comment on this item. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to this item should have begun the middle of your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for the city clerk to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you're calling in, press star nine. And the clerk will call you at the appropriate time. At this time, I'll ask the city clerk whether any comments have been received via the online, online comment card, or whether anyone has raised their hand to make audio comments.
Chair Thompson, I do not see any emails that would be generated by the online speaker cards. And currently I see no hands raised in this list of Zoom attendees. So if anyone who is attending this meeting via Zoom wishes to comment, now would be the time to click the raise your hand icon. I will check my email again. Do not see any. And I do not see any raised hands.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to move forward, given that we haven't seen any interest in comment at this time.
We have 17 attendees.
Excellent.
In the attendee section of the Zoom meeting, but no one is, no one of them are raising their hands.
Okay. So right now we'll come back to the commission for deliberation. And so I think I will once again call on people. I will change my order. Vice Chair Young? Do you have deliberation commentary?
I do. Thank you. So thank you very much, you guys, for the really great presentation and just how it's kind of went from watching the process of this project grow. And the last time we ran together, there was been a, a lot of comments and I know it's, it, it, it still proves to be an issue with this, this, this apartment building. That's one, one issue. There's, I don't know, we're kind of, we're kind of in a interesting time right now where it, you know, where resources and natural products are starting to be, international resources are starting to be kind of a major issue and kind of something that we really want to think about. I, I, I have a lot of questions in terms of some of these extensive building heights that are kind of like flying, you know, just like, wow, just like, okay, as you go, they're, they're getting begged for the, the, the size of projects there. But I, I, I see the use, it's still, it's still, it, it's still kind of intense. I think that trade-off in that garage space. I mean, I, I ask, why aren't we taking some of these floors underground? I know there's, I know there's water tables and I know that is expensive and I know it adds into some of the cost, but it's a question I, I, I beg the, I, I beg to always know. I, I like the connectivities of the parks and plazas. Let's talk about that because that to me is probably the most- I, I like the connectivities of the parks and plazas. Let's talk about that because that, to me, is probably the most fun. I like how it invites all the different directions and all the different parts and the different pieces of, I guess, that what, what you're trying to bring Emeryville to bring this massive, you know, wonderful center together. And, and, but, but like my other earlier question, you know, maybe, maybe it's, 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 it's nice to have a, a vantage point from somewhere. I, I, I know we have a couple of them here in Emeryville that are in, that are part of complexes that you could go in and you could go up a couple of layers and you can kind of enjoy. And there's even one that you'd stretch across a walkway. And it's, it's, it is something that it can be designed into if it's thought about. One thing that I want to bring forward a little bit, something that Commissioner Keller brought in on the last, one of the last, and this is in terms of the garage, back on the garage a little bit. And he showed up, he showed rendition of how one could kind of pop in and out this, this, this parking garage and really kind of show a fluctuation between these masses. It, I know it takes spaces and I know it's another thing, but maybe it's something that one needs to think about in those terms. I really like the changes of the colors, getting away from that Golden Gate Bridge color to this new brass material, like I, the color, I think it's, I think it's fantastic. Still back on the parking garage a little bit, and I'll kind of dive on that a little bit more. But one of the things that I have an issue with is, you know, here you are at home and I know we're having this, 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 but in winter time, people running high beams in the garage, you know, it's, it's, it's your, it, it's, it's a distraction for people living there. I just, I find it a little, I find it hard, you know, and it's difficult because they're, they're going to be there before this garage is going to be there. So this is going to be an issue. Okay, so, so. So my big comment about, you know, the, the B8A and the BB, you know, it, the B8B is just, it's, that middle part can be kind of scaling. I still don't get it. I still don't get a feel of like, how really big or small it is. I get the impression that it's this, that it isn't any taller than the buildings that are there. But then again, you look at some of these renditions and it really does look like it's twice as tall as the buildings that are there. And you get 11 floors out of it. And I, it's kind of like trying to hide the white elephant. And then it, it's, I, I think it's, it's not amount, it's not about the scale of the project, but it's like the message the project is trying to use is overbearing, massive. You know, and, you know, the, the, the big, the big guy on the block kind of thing.
So Vice Chair Young, I'm going to actually, I'm going to interrupt you to ask Maru to put up the slide that tells us exactly what we're supposed to give feedback on, just because I know in past, we've been a little more directed and made sure that we get the applicant, the information they need. So I think she showed, she showed a slide.
So she did show a slide, said, what's building A and building B? And then she asked, what was the thoughts on the commissions to be satisfied on the revised design? And then she also, they, they also asked.
Right.
If there's some kind, there it is.
Yeah, I think it'll help everyone.
Thank you. So, so this, this will help everybody because, you know, we want to kind of get to a point here. I, I think I covered a lot of what I wanted to say. You know, there's, there's, I, I do like, I do like the direction the project's going. I, I still think there's a lot of issues with some of these sizes and scales that are now being putting with this, this B and A building. I mean, this B8 building and B8B building. And I think it's still very difficult to figure out, how are you going to put a parking garage in front of somebody's view? I, I just think that's just, I think that's just calling it what you're going to call it. And I think the landscape stuff is marvelous. I think the, the layout and bike paths are marvelous. I think the walkways and some of this just, it's nice. And I think it's really nice kind of addition. But there's just still some basic issues that I feel this project kind of still doesn't solve. And that's my thoughts. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Young. Commissioner Keller?
Thank you, Chair. So basically, I really am very, very happy with the project. I think you guys have really done a great job architecturally, spatially. I think incorporating the plazas for community use is a really important thing. I often walk through this neighborhood going to Target and Best Buy, and it's just such a dead zone right now. It's just very uninteresting. And so I think once we get Sherman Williams activated and we get the bike pit, the bike trail going through Horton Park into the west side of Sherman Williams, you know, we have opportunities to, to take a bike route that gets in the general vicinity of where Horton takes you. And so people have options. I like the, the classical bike lane. So those of us who want to just take a more direct route and are a little bit more experienced bikers have that opportunity. People with families or less confident bikers have the route to go through Sherman Williams and feel a little bit safer. So I think, you know, we're, we're getting a really vibrant part of our city developed. And I think it's going to be really, really important. For me, because I work at UC Berkeley, I used to work at the School of Public Health. I have a connection with the PCR as well. So I'm really, really flattered and happy you guys are going to retain that name for PCR Plaza. I really think it connects to our history of Emeryville. And that's why I think this project is so important because the, the biosciences is such a big part of what's going to be in our future for, for quite a long time. And for Emeryville to be part of that and has been there since the beginning. I really think this, this project just really kind of keeps us on the map for that. And I really, really in strong supporter of it. As you kind of figured or know, I'm going to talk a little bit about the parking structure and the parking. I've hammered you guys on this since the beginning. And hearing you talk about, you know, putting aside Zimergen spaces already and then, and then talking about the future parking being at 1.5 per thousand square feet. Actually, that's the number I was looking for, was to get down to 1.5. I didn't ever tell you guys that, but that's kind of what I had in mind is I, I like to see that because that is a reduction and it's not moving us where we want to be. But with this COVID situation, I look out my window and I see I-80 packed again as much as it was prior to COVID. And I couldn't understand that. But what people were telling me is that even though all businesses are not open, people are choosing to take their car to work rather than take public transportation because of COVID. And I think problems like COVID, we'll get this one under our belt, hopefully it will move forward. But I think problems like COVID are going to be around with us for a while. And as much as I'm an advocate, an advocate towards pushing the new paradigm to alternate transit services, the reality is cars are going to be with us for a while, probably for foreseeable future of my life. So keeping that in mind that we need to keep this balance. I, I did some research on my own. I did several years ago, I actually went through Emeryville and did a account of parking structures and how many spaces we had and helped myself wrap my brain about this. And it might help the other commissioners who don't know to get an idea of what 1900 or 2000 parking spaces look like and what a garage. For my calculations, which these are basically done on Google Earth, am I going through a parking lot and counting? So they're certainly not accurate to any extent, but they're an estimate. But Bay Street has 2,000 parking spaces. So what they're proposing here is what we see at Bay Street. So, and IKEA, IKEA has 1,950 according to my numbers. So using that, I'm kind of basing my thought of what I see in the way of traffic in coming into those places. The type of business, there are also the towers out in Watergate. Like there's something like 2,700 parking spaces out there. So using these garages and thinking how I see traffic patterns in these areas and working with the biosciences, one of the buildings within my region on UC Berkeley is Stanley Hall, which is an 11-story research building. It's probably one of the most intense research buildings on campus. And it basically runs 24/7. Now granted, there is a time during the prime time of day when most people are there. But these facilities tend to run nowadays because of the nature of the work and the urgency of a lot of their work. They don't run on a nine to five schedule. So taking that all into consideration and, and thinking about how this, you know, might impact in terms of traffic and what we, what we see now and also wear and properties, I think with all their campus, we're looking at nearly 2,000 cars parking there. My fears have been a little bit elated that I'm not concerned about seeing a flood of cars coming and going as, as I originally anticipated. And the fact that understanding their business model of what they have to do for their tenants, the fact that they're trying to meet us and reducing this. I would rather see 1,500 parking spaces, 1,600 parking spaces. But the reality of that just may not be there with the current situation that our world is in. And maybe they will, I think their, their parking garage is going to be overparked and they're not going to see this. And they're going to waste some of their money doing this. But that's, you know, there are money to spend and what they're going to do. So, and I think as time goes on and perhaps we do better with alternate transit services, they'll have empty parking spaces. And that's a, an issue they, they get to live with. But I think the design of the garage has been fleshed out better. I appreciate them stepping it back so that it's not so close to the apartment building at Sherman Williams. I like the landscape. It seems like you guys have done a lot of research in there. And it looks like that, that wall will grow and be green as opposed to other places that I've seen. But you guys seem to have a, a pretty good grip on what will work there. So as much as I dislike the high number and the possibility, considering how big that structure could have been in the original PUD and what it looks like now, I'm, I'm pretty happy with the overall design. It's not perfect, but I think the enhancements sort of bicycle transit on that segment of Horton. I think enlarging Horton Park with Horton Plaza, that's a really big issue. I was wondering about the viability of a coffee shop there or something. But I think it will work better there than say in the plaza of, of building 13, 14, no, I'm losing my numbers here. B1 and B2, 3, I think having a coffee shop there will not be as viable as here. Because as you said, I have a number of people that I work with that come to work after the Bart station and they always pick up coffee on the way to the office, leaving Bart. So I think that's viable. I think people coming over to and from the bridge will use the cafe there more so than in the center, especially if it's open on a weekend, which I hope it will be eventually. So overall, it's, it's not perfect, but I really think that, I'm really excited that you guys want to build out the whole campus now and not wait for later. I know it's a phased project, but I really think it's great. I'm really excited about the building on Stanford. I don't know what the concern with the height is. The height you're proposing is about the same height as the Hyatt House Hotel right here. It's, you know, Tolstoy's, Levenstir's is not that tall. And it's certainly appropriate where it is. And it's certainly within the guidelines of the community. So I'm excited and I just hope that we can get this moving forward as soon as possible because we need the research space. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller. Commissioner Guerrero?
I mean, one moment here. There we go. Okay, let's see. I start with buildings B8, A and 8B. The design, I think, is lovely. It's state of the art, the clean lines are awesome, the angles. I mean, I, I love everything about the designs of, of the new, the two buildings that have been introduced. So I think they complement the, the overall campus look and feel. The garage building, I obviously have some, some issues with introducing as many cars as are being proposed here to this portion of the city. At this point, I agree with Commissioner Keller in that this, you, you may be, you may find that you have a lot of empty spaces at some point. I've seen that all over the city with parking lots like this. And so I think that may actually be the case. I, I want to go back to Commissioner, Vice Chair Young's feedback about a balcony space. And I think that like, there might be an opportunity to introduce that kind of space at the parking garage. Because I, I think that an element that I'd like to introduce to that parking garage is more of like a a space above the, the open roof on the fifth floor. That instead of having open air possibly covering it with a, like a pollinator garden extension to what's living on the wall. I think that might be a nice way for people to enjoy that level a little bit higher. And for the residents across the street to enjoy a nice view of whatever birds, butterflies or bees want to enjoy that space too. So I'm thinking that that might be an opportunity, since that is not a public or a potentially maybe open to public. The, the green wall, I, I really appreciate the, the palette colors that are being proposed and, and offering like the flowery trees and the different colors. Like I, I imagined some pops of color in a, the, the past applicant introduced some, some green walls that, that I don't feel were as dynamic as the one that you're presenting. So I appreciated yours. The, the north wall, it's, it's pretty empty. I think that there, there could use some treatment there on the, the building, the parking lot north wall. City staff has recommended some, some green wall treatment there as well. I think I'd like to explore that as well and see what we can add to the, the north part, corner of that space, being that it's also part of that people are going to enjoy in the park. Long-term parking for, for bike parking. You mentioned in the presentation that each one of the, the buildings will have long-term parking for tenants. But I think there's also a need for having long-term parking for visitors. So they can have their, their bikes be safe as well. And so I'd recommend some installation of bike link lockers for visitors that may not be able to access the parking, bike parking that you're proposing inside the buildings. I, I loved all the, the different open spaces that, and the variety of like how you're, you're proposing to activate those. I thought that was really fun. I, I really liked the, the varying mounds that were, that you introduced and the steps that, that were offered different places for, for people to sit on different levels. I thought that was dynamic and a nice use of space. And in the last section for sustainability, you, you went over some, like a lot of details about energy usage and building design. But one element of sustainability that was left out of that piece was zero waste. And so I'm interested in knowing more about how you're meeting some zero waste benchmarks for design. Are you including elements that are being reused from other, when you're demolishing different buildings? Or what are you doing with that? Like zero waste is a big part of sustainability and I didn't hear anything about that in the presentation under that section. And so be interested in learning more about that. And, and then my last piece is about design that I left out earlier. And it was about the, the different varying textures. In building one, you use the, the wooden, like different wooden pieces and the overhang. And I like how you incorporated that in the design for buildings 8B and 8A. And so wondering if there are other ways to incorporate that wooden element at ground level throughout the, the campus. I, I like that variation. Those are all my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerrero. So I'd like to move on to Commissioner Jaffe.
Great, thank you, Chair Thompson. So on B8A and B8B, I had a similar question as the one that was asked about making some of the space publicly open. And I understand that there are some significant challenges to doing that. But I do think it would be worth continuing to explore if there's some way that there could be like, you know, a public entrance or something, because you've shown us a drawing in which the balconies are very inviting. And I just think it would be so wonderful to open that up as another type of open space and help the campus really feel welcoming to Emeryville through the use of some of that space that's up a bit more. I'll just put in my comment here about PCR Plaza. I think it's great to have that space there. So let me frame this in terms of. So let me frame this in terms of my comment overall about the open spaces. The total amount of open space is great. It's broken up into fairly small pieces. And so I think that to activate each of those pieces and invite people into them, each one is going to have to have a unique offering. And I think that's possible, but I would just offer that as like a framing to you as you're thinking through the build out of the design. Could one be a nature place, place base? Could one potentially have a play structure of some sort that reflects the themes of the area, but is inviting to adults as well as children for active use? You know, what I think Horton Plaza will probably be the most obvious choice for people because it'll be right on the path of the bridge there and right on the greenway. But the others may take a little bit of creativity in terms of what exactly would be needed to bring people in. In terms of the parking garage, I really appreciate all of your comments and the work that you've been doing on that and your explanations. I'll have to admit that it's still very difficult for me to to live with the idea that we need to build so many parking spaces in 2020, especially for a project that will have a multi decade lifespan likely. So, you know, part of it is around imagining 3,900 entrances and exits through that parking garage every day potentially. Very happy to see the class four bikeways provided in the new designs. I just, you know, I think if anything we can do to continue to question whether that is really a necessary number and try and draw that down through any creative solution possible would be very high on my list. Given that there will be a parking garage there. I wanted to add one thing to the design aspect of it, which is to potentially explore public art on the facade. I think that's been talked about in terms of etchings for bird friendly design. I know there's also some garages that really just use the side of the garage as a template or a canvas of some sort and invite in new designs. And so and to any degree that that's possible, I think it would be great. Fully support the idea of thinking about creative uses for the parking structure during off peak times or also as a way of sort of hedging. You know, if if it does turn out that those parking spaces are not used, how can we design that space so that it could have other uses to the community in the future? And then I think the last thing I wanted to say was, I know you've been talking to Bike Use Bay, the 53rd Street issue with Sheroes and then also having Uber and Lyft traffic there with a drop off is potentially a conflict zone in my mind. So maybe just trying to think through how that could be managed most successfully. Right now, 53rd, I think, is a pretty good street to bike on and it would be a shame to really see more traffic coming through there that's not separated in some way. But in general, I just want to say thank you for the very clear explanations for all of your work. Really enjoyed seeing the designs. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Chafee. Commissioner Sahani.
Thank you. Give me one second. Okay, so first of all, I would like to say that I'm really delighted to see the overall design evolve since it was last or first shown back in December last year. Let me just talk about a few general comments and then I'll get into these three questions that are shown on the screen. So first of all, overall, I think I I really like the the design from all different points of view, architectural, urban design, landscape and use of sustainable features. I I also appreciate the teams thinking in breaking it, breaking the presentation down and highlighting some of the aspects that were not covered in previous presentations, such as transportation strategies. You know, like furthering the open space design and also adding sustainability. I think some of the comments that I had on the sustainability friends, such as waste and other ways of using renewable energy are already covered by my fellow commissioners. So I'll not get too much into that. Now getting into the specifics, so building eight, A and eight, B, I really like the design that the team has come up with. I think it it kind of continues the whole design language that the the other or the initial buildings that we had seen, one, two and three had set up and it's it's a continuation of that. I also like the overall concept of the open space that was created, especially the connection of the greenway through the campus by connecting these various plazas or nodes, as you call, and connecting it to the Horton Park. I think that that has been very well thought out. There has been good, you know, thoughtful choice of the various landscape palette. So I appreciate that as well as the use of, you know, like terminology such as or nomenclature such as PCR Plaza that memorizes the history of the place. So I think all of those are, you know, like excellent ways of connecting this campus to Emeryville. I also like the overall renderings, you know, Chiron Way that you opened up as a shared street. A few comments on that is I would encourage the team to look at ways to explore how how someone using the space can visually, you know, feel continuous while while he or she moves through the campus. And this can be done in various ways, you know, like having some visual clues that continue into various plazas. There could be like wayfinding signage, interpretive markers, other things that kind of emphasizes on the history that, you know, you guys are trying to emphasize on PCR Park. Or, you know, also talking about the other sustainability aspects that the that the campus is creating. You know, there there are several buildings, I think UC Berkeley and other locations where 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 they try to use these interpretive markers as educational tools of of promoting the idea of green building and sustainability. So look into those ideas and that that could perhaps be developed as a program. In terms of the garage, the second point garage building, I think the garage has come a long way from last time around. I I appreciate the setback in the building, creating more open spaces, really like the very detailed analysis that was conducted on the green living wall system, you know, using or, you know, like accounting for how much time of the day sunlight would be present out there and then accordingly choosing various palettes. But like as some of my fellow commissioners noted, I still feel that 11 story parking structure in in front of a residential development. It's just a an idea that is hard to digest. And although I acknowledge, you know, like people are traveling in cars, especially during these times, we we need to take a step back and really think about it long term, you know. I I noticed in the construction schedule that eight, A and eight, B are not going to be constructed until 2027. So I was wondering if the team had any ideas about creative ways of dealing with parking, you know, like partially constructing it with with ways of, you know, like expanding later or, you know, like constructing what is needed and then having the parking for eight and eight, B in in the form of an underground structure. You know, I think when when I I had met you offline, I also floated this idea of what the Microsoft campus had done or has done in in Redmond. I believe they they have all their parking underground, which which opens the subsurface space for, you know, the public domain and it connects it to the campus. So I would explore you to, you know, check out those options and see what what could be done. I do appreciate the fact that the total number of parking spaces are lower than than what is prescribed. It's just the the sheer volume of of that building that I think people are having a hard time, you know, like comprehending, especially thinking about it long term. You know, what what happens when when that level of parking is is not required in the future? And then, let's see. Yeah, the I think I've already covered the overall design in terms of open space. A few, you know, like minor detail points that I think will evolve in the next stages of design. But since I noticed it, I'll just, you know, like bring them to your attention. So one thing that I noticed was there was, there was a drop off zone that was shown on 53rd Street. But it's, although it was indicated that Hollis Street would have drop off zones, that was not exactly conveyed. And since Hollis Street has only one lane in the southbound direction, I was not sure how how the space was was being utilized out there. So maybe that's something that the team can further detail out in the next stages. The the comment that I was making earlier during the question session was to to really, you know, like understand what warrants a signal and what warrants a pedestrian scramble. I know that that idea has been toiled around on other projects such as the 40th and San Pablo as well. And I think I I can't remember the details, but we we determined that the the transportation volumes and conditions do not warrant a scramble. So definitely, you know, like dive deep into into that to understand what what kind of intersection treatments are required. The other thing is that, you know, since there is the parking garage and there will be a lot of entry and exits through this. What what could be other ways that bicycle pedestrians, sorry, bicycle vehicle conflicts could be minimized? You know, the 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 vertical separator definitely helps, but, you know, having a great separation by, you know, like elevating the bicycle facility or, you know, like other creative ways are something that I would encourage the team explore further. Let's see, do I have any other comments? Yeah, and then I I think that the space north of the parking garage, the Horton Landing, I think that that will be a great public amenity. But as was pointed out in one of the earlier, either the staff meeting or the BPAC, I I would recommend that the team conduct the analysis to see if, you know, the retail space out there would be feasible. And, you know, like it's it's a great way of activating, but is there enough demand that, you know, it it will stay active? I I don't want it to, you know, like not get the right lease to be occupied and then it's still a dead space after after all the interventions. So, you know, definitely try to investigate that further. I think those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sahani. So, um, so, yeah, so I wanted to add some some thoughts on the project. I would, I'm going to start with the particulars of the feedback. Building B eight, A and building B eight, B. I really appreciate the addition of these two buildings. I I really like to see the entire urban build out at the same time. The way that there's been, that's enabled you to kind of cohesively treat transportation and the public realm. That's been a benefit of thinking about these buildings. So that's great. In terms of the design, I do appreciate the the contrasting materiality, that there are metal panels and then there is glass. And that was something that I felt was a little bit missing from B one and B two to two slash three is that overall the massing was very attractive, but the materiality was very uniform. So I think it's nice to see these other two buildings exploring some materiality, different, different, different cladding. In terms of the garage building thirteen, fourteen, it is a massive building. It is 11 stories and it is fairly long. I definitely appreciate the pullback that you've done adjacent to the Sherwin-Williams project. And so I think the the real question I would have is trying to kind of also embed and explore some of the intent of the design guidelines. Because the paneling I find very uniform and 11 stories of very uniform paneling could seem pretty significant. Is there a way to really vary the thickness of those panels to create depth, to give the facade more articulation? I think exploring that would be really, really helpful. Again, I think I I second commissioners in terms of them saying if there is an opportunity to reduce parking, that would be great. But, yeah, definitely want the success of the project and what you have done so far has been significant. So I thank you for that. In terms of the overall design, oh, actually, one more thing on the parking garage. I I had questions sort of more prompted by the rendering technique about the ceiling lights in the garages. And perhaps they would be visible from the adjacent residential units. So, you know, I think that's just something to investigate in a little more detail because they showed so prominently through in the rendering. So going to the more general comment about the design, overall, the project is a fantastic project and I would urge you as a team to just keep going, making it better. I did in the package, there were a couple of things that I just wanted to point out that could use a little more revisiting and detail. Is there was a shadow study analysis? It didn't include a noon time and and it didn't include an analysis, really, really sort of, it showed, it showed shadows, but it didn't show why the shadows were important. And so in terms of being able to investigate that and clarify that for the commission, that would be fantastic. Also, I I think I agree, the cafe, as long as it's viable, would be great there. I hope that the crossing would be widely used, but I think it does bear more detailed study. And in terms of the transportation perspective, I don't know about Emery Go Round and where they would have stops. And that was something that occurred to me as you were showing it as a as a key component. I know that some of the, some of the express routes don't stop at 53rd and that that was changed because I remember not taking it as much because it didn't stop there. So that's just something to think about and to look into. Other than that, again, I I really appreciated the sustainability slide. I I really appreciated your thoughtful review of the regulations and sort of pulling out where Emeryville has stated an interest in these elements. So so keep doing that. And then I also hope that we can get from aspirations to commitments as this project moves forward. So I look forward to future presentations about that. So those are my comments. And I wanted to see if there are any other comments that have come up. Stephen, Commissioner Keller.
I just had two things. One thing I forgot is in the next iteration, we've seen visions of the parking structure from generally the northeast corner or, yeah. And what I like, there's talk about the stair feature and a kind of penetration in the center of the parking structure. But I never really see what that looks like. And there's supposed to be like, I wouldn't call it a pocket park, but there's some supposedly some area in there. So I'd like to see a rendering of the center of the parking structure so we can kind of see how that plays out. Because from the angles, it does look very flat and it looks very linear. And I know it's kind of broken up in the center, so we can kind of see that. And then this question is probably more from Charlie. When is the proper time to see a T D M, what they're kind of planning or hoping to see in that? I know that's a part of the process, but I'm hoping it's part of the process that we can hear and have input on and not just get a thing saying, here's the T D M that we're going to use. So when was, when is the appropriate time for us to review a T D M?
Well, I believe that will be part of what we're reviewing, what we're having our consultants peer review. I frankly, I'm not sure exactly when something like that would be appropriate for the commission. Because if you will recall, this is a P U D that was approved 25 years ago. And the finding that the commission has to make in order to approve it is that it substantially conforms to the E D P. So I'm not sure how a T D M plan would fit into that. For new projects that are processed under the current regulations, we do like to have a T D M plan to come to the commission to review during the approval process. But this is a little different because it's an older project, but it is being considered and factored in as part of the transportation studies that we're peer reviewing and also part of the sequel analysis. So imagine all of that will be presented to you at the approval hearing.
Okay, and then that would be also when we get the status on the need of a traffic light and signal as opposed to the stop signs.
Right, right.
Okay, I just want an opportunity to review that maybe before we, you know, giving. Okay, I just want an opportunity to review that maybe before we, you know, give it a kind of approval or something, even though it may not be a basis. What we use, I still like to know what we're looking at.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Chair Thompson, you are muted.
Yep, moving on by myself. Okay, so so thank you, everyone, for your comments. Hopefully, the the applicant has gotten the direction they need. And I guess I would just take a moment to to make sure is the applicant feeling like they have gotten the information they need?
Thank you. This was very good feedback, very detailed. I definitely appreciate it. We'll take all of this to heart. I don't know if now is the time to respond. We'll, you know, we'll provide written responses along the way and then definitely incorporate a lot of the cool ideas we've heard for the. Project. Sorry, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I should have asked the, you know, like the cafe viability, like will, you know, we, it's 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 part of the space that we would just give to. To service and amenity, not just to ourselves. We're not going to charge rent, like it will be feasible, it will work, there will be cappuccino there, like there's no question. You know, that's, that's what we do everywhere, you know, we don't count on market forces to have an empty slot there. That that's a lost opportunity for ourselves and for the community. There will be coffee shop, you know, or whatever it is that we'll put it in for sure. But anyways, there's a whole so host of responses. The 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 one thing I'll say, and let's just say, same closing, you know, we we talked about the strength of the industry and we're very excited. R and D is, you know, is going very strong, but even in our business, there are cycles of ups and downs. You know, the cycles may not be as severe as in other industries, but there are. And so we definitely see a window of opportunity that we as a group, and I'm saying it in the broadest sense, you know, it's a, it's an amazing opportunity that we want to execute on with your support. And we want to get to there, you know, while the window of opportunity is open. The we'll do all the hard work, we'll incorporate the comments, we'll, as you can, hopefully over the past six and a half months, we've demonstrated, you know, that we're ready and willing to roll up our sleeves and do the hard work and we'll continue to. That is how we, that is how we do everything we are, we're doing, not just here, but everywhere else. But I do request the commission to, you know. Think through this with us in terms of, you know, making the most of the window of opportunity that's open to make this campus real. We don't want to miss the window and then wait another five years or 10 years for the next thing. The timing of those projects, there was a comment, you know, about 2027, you know, that's a sort of a theory that we could be building all of this much sooner, you know, if if it. We could be building all of it in four years, you know, or five years. And the sequence is also, you know, a sort of on paper, we may be building it in a different sequence if that's where, you know, an anchor ten wants to plant a flag. Anyways, it's been a long, a long day here for all of us. Definitely appreciate the comments. We have clear guidance and. You know, we want you to know, we will take all these comments to heart like we have in the past and. The request would be, you know, as we get, you know, I'm thinking through the window of opportunity. Going into Q four, we 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 are requesting the commission to consider an approval session. And as we get into the latter half of the year, at the end of Q three and then Q four. We'll go back to the, you know, back and, you know, incorporate all the comments here and then we would like to bring it forward for an approval session the next time we meet. That's a request for consideration.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you. That gives us a better sense of the timeline. And, yeah, and we do hope that you can integrate everything. Okay, well, I think that closes out that agenda item and we only have one other thing on our on our agenda is the planning commissioner comments. Are there any comments at this time?
Thompson, I don't know if Commissioner Mendez was trying to call back in.
Did someone text her? I guess that's a question.
I I did send her an email to let her know that the live stream was back up and she got that.
Okay, well, we can, we can pause for a moment.
Or other commissioners could make comments if they.
Yes. Comments?
I'm necessarily know that I have a comment, but I was just trying to kind of thinking that does, does the commissioner still, it would be helpful to actually visit a lab building and go out on a roof? I don't know if I can offer this, but I can check it because Stanley Hall, I mean, when he talked about the equipment that sits on a roof, I think of staying home. My job as an asset manager is to inventory that stuff. And when he stopped by, I think of walking on out, there is no space on those roofs for anything but equipment. And that's a huge building and it it could be helpful if you guys see something like this. And also, I mean, these labs are governed by security, you know, especially these commercial labs.
So Commissioner Keller. I think it's important not to revisit the prior. Agenda item in case the applicant has fallen off and anybody else that's interested and.
Yeah.
Seems like the question is, is whether the commission is interested in doing a site visit, in which case that would be a publicly noticed meeting.
Right, so so just find out if there's interest in anyone visiting a site like that. So we're going to answer that tonight.
Yeah, no, I think that's nice to throw that out as an as an option. And if if these, if this group is fast tracking, which is what they're indicating, maybe sooner rather than later. And having that as an opportunity would be, would be good. And if you can, you know, I mean, I think in general, if you put out the opportunity, if we can put out the opportunity. And we get enough people who want to go, then we should do it.
Yeah, I just have to clear it with the campus and the building management. I don't know if that would be possible, but it's an option I was interested in pursuing.
And let me also just note with COVID protocols, this could be a little bit tricky to orchestrate.
Indeed.
We need to be socially distanced and have masks and have the public be able to attend also socially distanced. So it would be a challenge to orchestrate.
It would be harder.
Yeah, okay. Just an idea.
Thanks, Charlie.
So there is a, there is a possible solution. AutoCAD has a feature that you can actually post entire projects. On the web that could be visible, just kind of like in the same way we're watching this. And you could navigate through it using your cursor, your mouse. You actually can move around with a space in and out of a building, take views from many, many places. I've seen this before without the helmets. It's, it's an everyday thing. I think if we made some kind of. Projects of certain sizes of of something of this scale. I think it'd be kind of a, you know, and now that we have COVID and now this exactly what Mr. Keller is talking about here. Maybe we could at least get a better feel of the massings of buildings and what scale we're really looking at. It's not as great as being live, but it's also much better than looking at a static image that. That its perspectives might be a little bit off. You don't really get a feel of how big or small or how wide or how thin. Or the colors that might be, and you get an option of turning it into nighttime. And you get an option of turning it into midday. You get to look at the shadows.
Well, and I think just because it is late, you know, the question, the only question I had is. Charlie, in terms of being able to help the commission in their decision making. You know, is there a sort of a suggested educational method? It is COVID time. Was there anything you would recommend from a staff perspective?
That's a hard one. I'll have to get back to you on that. I mean, I think Mr. Young has an intriguing suggestion. I guess, I guess what I would ask is what exactly is it that you want to know about? And we can, I mean, I'm not asking you to answer that right now. We can go back through our notes of the study session tonight. And try to flag the issues that you have brought up and see.
Okay, but we're not talking about the prior agenda item. We need to just stay focused on.
That's true.
General. Education tools that the commission is looking for. We're not talking about any specific project.
Yeah, got it. Talking about a building type.
So it seems like an educational tool that the commission may be interested in the future is the AutoCAD that Commissioner, or sorry, Vice Chair Young. Just described, and that is something that staff can look into and report back on at the next commission or some future commission meeting, I should say.
And because I'm semi versed in this. I'm more than happy to reply to any. Emails or anything that is out there. I know that. In terms of cost, everybody's worried about cost, it's a lot less money than building a model and you can actually view it from. Anywhere you're on a web, on a phone. It's, it's, it's totally there and and there's no excuses for not having it. They've actually perfected it. So, so and and the architect, from the best I would know. It drags all that material. They don't even have to do any extra work to do it.
And so I'm going to recommend that we move on from this topic.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. And it does look like Commissioner Mendez has not called back in.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, so I'm sort of satisfied that we can wrap this up. So, yeah, so in terms of any other comments, this is the time for other comments. We've covered that topic. Anything else? And I think also in general, the comments, the commissioner comments also can be about, you know, of also about. Noting something that's upcoming or sort of adjusted general announcement. It doesn't, doesn't have to be, I mean, it should not be anything that was on the agenda formerly. But but in future meetings, if there is a public announcement, this is the time to do it. But with that said, I'm going to adjourn the meeting officially at 10:58 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.